Good morning. It is 10 o'clock. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We will start with a salute to the flag. And it would be great if Lieutenant Colonel Jason Hines could lead us in the pledge.
Actually, I have a public affairs officer sheriff at the Capitol. He's in front of the lake. He'll be here.
No worries. Do you mind leading us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States. To the public which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk will now do roll call.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Mike Clark.
Present.
Marius Garcia, here.
Clara Andreola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Kanderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager will now go into public comment, item three.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments that are to be made to the commission as a whole and virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
We have quite a few people signed in, so the second name person, please queue up. First up, we have Barry Levinson, followed by Bill Miller.
All right. Hey, good morning, Washoe County Commissioners. My name is Barry Levinson, and I am a member of the Climateers and the Sierra Club Great Basin Group. I would first like to thank the commission for certifying the primary election results and to express my gratitude to Carrie Ann Burgess for running a smooth election without any evidence of significant fraud. I personally voted by mail and have every confidence that my vote was accurately counted. I'm especially grateful that I was not required to attend a caucus to have my vote counted, as I may not have been able to attend and would therefore have been disenfranchised. Judging by the voter and caucus turnout for the Republicans, it looks like a lot of them may have been disenfranchised, given that over 21,000 voted in the primary while only 12,400 attended a caucus. We know that Nikki Haley supporters were disenfranchised since she was not even on the caucus ballot. So in summary, I'm in strong favor of continuing the primary process, including mail-in and early voting options, and I'm against using the caucus process, which disenfranchises a large proportion of voters. On a separate subject, I would like to address building codes for Washoe County. In the recently adopted 2040 master plan, there is a policy principle for development of renewable energy and infrastructure, but there's no mention of electrification and all-new construction. Building operations account for about 45% of all greenhouse gas emissions in our county. To combat climate change, we simply must transition away from gas infrastructure and toward electrification of all-new buildings. This includes building codes that require all-electric appliances, EV chargers, and solar panels. Electrical appliances, including heat pumps and electric water heaters, are much more energy-efficient and less polluting than gas appliances. We should be discouraging gas infrastructure in all-new buildings, which would save in both construction and operating costs. And we should be encouraging and supporting the rollout of EVs by making it easy for homeowners to charge at home. We do hope that electrification requirements in the building code can be addressed in some future policy action. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Bill Miller, followed by Brooke Westlake.
I'm Bill Miller, Reno resident, on and off since 1985. I'm here to talk in support of the affordable housing, which will be on the agenda later, and making sure that it's not only affordable, but comfortable and energy-efficient. We can build housing that is gas-free, electric-only, with solar panels on the roofs, EV chargers built-in. This will increase not only the efficiency, but will make the affordable housing even more affordable, because you won't be having electric bills or gas bills. So please consider this as you're putting together the plan for making affordable housing available for our residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Brooke Westlake, followed by Pam Dar.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy Tuesday. It's beautiful outside. My name is Brooke Westlake. I have been in Reno, Nevada since 1989, and I just wanted to come by today. I know that the Library Board Commission appointment seat has been moved to March, which is fantastic, so I wanted to make a little comment. I'm a first-generation graduate, and I do hold a master's in criminal justice from UNR. But what is more unique with my experience is that I did go through the school district system here, and I'm dyslexic, and I was diagnosed in graduate school. Reading has been a significant challenge in my life, but I'm happy to say I have some books coming out this year as a first-time published author. And I'm extremely interested in the position. I've sent all of you guys little emails, and you'll probably get another one from me. But I want to leave you guys with a little library comedy. So why are library buildings so big? Because they're filled with tons of stories. Thank you and have a great day.
Pam Dar, followed by Terri Brooks.
Can I have two minutes? I might need more time. No kidding. Hi, I'm Pam Dar, Washoe County resident. Good morning, Chair Hill and other Commissioners. Once again, I didn't plan on being here, but I did take a look at the agenda, and I have a lot of questions. I think I have an answer, but I think others might appreciate clarification. Looking on the agenda, I see not to exceed $300,000 for astroturf. I see $30,500 to purchase property. I see $205,400 for a new appointment. I may have the answer to this, but, like I said, I think we need clarification. When it comes to elections, I don't see any elections items placed on the agenda. So why is that? I'll go to that later in just a moment. Number nine, the wall. Is the county going to gift half of it? What kind of cost analysis was done on this? $186,000 is a lot of money. So I just want to know, when I sat in the homeowners board, they did a reserve analysis. So if we spend that money, does it save the county money in the long run by gifting it to them and let them be the liability? Or is it something we may want to keep and do our own reserve analysis and have that money down the road? What kind of lifespan does a wall have? These are questions I'd like to have answers to before we give a $186,000 gift. It's the way I read it. I could be wrong. I need clarification. Then we have a huge amount to write off. Is that the total amount? It's just under the allowed by the NRS. Is there more out there? Can more be done? That's a large amount just to write off. And as a resident, I need clarification of exactly what processes are happening, what more can be done. I understand write-offs. I was a purchasing agent. We had things that were returned, and we had to write it off and balance it. But how much is out there? You know, it's good to know, because this looks like it's just under the amount. Are we going to be taking more write-offs down the road that's hanging out there? That's our money, our losses. I'd like to know, and I'm sure we just kind of balance everything. But getting back to my first thing about the elections, and that's why I'm concerned. It's just I'm really, that's my thing. That's why I'm here mostly. Last week, my voting record was incorrect. I got an email saying it was corrected. I went in there, and it was changed, but it's not correct. I sent an email, and I'll see if this week it's corrected. But it's wrong, and I have backup to show it's wrong. So I'm not making this up. More needs to be done and more transparency. And if it takes paper ballots, I don't understand. If that's what's going to help us trust our elections, why are we not doing more? Because right now, I'm a little shaky on the whole thing, and I'm trying. I've tried everything. I donate a lot of my time trying to make things good when it comes to people's voices in the elections. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terri Brooks, followed by Jim Dykstra.
It's me, Terri Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address the problem of unemployment as it's related to homelessness. When the coronavirus came, it caused a lot of people to be unemployed, and many of them became homeless and felt like their lives were being destroyed. Being unemployed can cause a person to be homeless, and then it's harder to be employed again if you are still homeless. And if becoming unemployed, you lost your means of transportation and lack means of getting to work, how can you get another occupation? Each problem seems to lead to another, so when you're in a homeless situation, it will probably lead to you finding yourself in a hopeless situation. When you find yourself homeless, it's as if you have to start all over from scratch, and you have to find new factors in life with which you have to reattach. Being unemployed and homeless can kind of get you off track, so as far as looking for a job, you might be reluctant to go back. Then if you are offered back the job that you once had, you might be too embarrassed to go back because of the problems you've had. After being homeless for a while because you're unemployed, going back to work might be something you want to avoid. If you're homeless and hungry and you're getting poor nutrition, that could cause you to lose any kind of ambition. And if you have been lowered into a state of depression, you are probably in no mood to seek an occupation. And then the longer that you stay unemployed, then the less likely you are to get re-employed. And if you are offered a job, but your answer is no, then your problem of homelessness is only going to grow. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and since I'm a retired librarian, I've got a lot more stories to say.
Thank you. Wonderful poem again.
Jim Dykstra, followed by Elise Weatherly, and I do have some documents to distribute for Mr. Dykstra.
So this is the handout that I provided with the fancy graph on the front. And in 1980, there was a court, a justice court was established in Incline Village. But since that time, as you can see on the chart, the population growth in Sparks, Reno, and the county as a whole have far outstripped Incline Village. Next page. This creates a situation where we have one justice in Incline, serving a population of a little over 12,000 in a below-average crime rate, and we have 10 justices, including the municipal and justice court in Reno, serving 32,000, over 32,000 population each in a high-crime environment. As you could imagine, that results in a much heavier caseload for the Reno justices. In addition, since 1980, other things have changed. On the next page, with the shooting of Judge Weller in 2006, the need for security around courts has greatly increased. It's not efficient to have a security perimeter for a one-judge court when you could have it for a four- or six-judge court. It's uneconomic. Next page, I have a typo there, but since 2020, the Incline Justice Court has essentially been virtual. That was the main reason for setting it up originally, is that people couldn't, didn't want to have to go down the hill in the winter. But that has been alleviated by having a virtual court. Last page, you have a once-in-a-decade opportunity. Judge Tyrus has announced his retirement. Let him consolidate this virtual court and other Reno justice court as his final hurrah. This will allow the elimination of almost three sheriff and bailiff positions and save over $400,000 a year of the $900,000 budget. Then I would advocate you take $200,000 of that savings annually, adjust it for inflation, and fund an amazing community center in that space up there. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Steve Letty.
Hello, Elise Weatherly. It's very scary to be here. I think you guys know that by now. Anyway, I've been noticing things that are taking place, like you guys have to, you know, last time I was here, you had to stand up for a reverend, and before that, you had to stand up for witch and all that kind of stuff, right? And so remain seated, but float up. Oh, wait a second. That breaks the law of physics. I'm not religious. I believe in physics. I do, I do, I do. I believe in physics. Why do I believe in physics? Because things happen for a reason. They didn't just come out of the blue, right, and create themselves. It's impossible for them to do that. So I wanted to go back over, well, what's created and what's invented, right? Who invented the beloved T-bar for accounting purposes, which, by the way, I like the T-bar? Well, it was Luca Pacliola. Italian roots, 1494. He created double-entry bookkeeping. Who would have thought of such a thing, right? I love it. What about numbers? Who invented numbers? Wait a second. They were created? What? I do, I do, I do believe in physics. I do, I do, I do. What about resurrection from the dead, right? That's just a religious thing, right? Wait, that's an act of physics. What do you do about that light? Who invented light? Uh-oh, light was created. See, what I'm trying to say is that you have to get to the root of things to determine what you're actually going to believe, and that can be kind of fun. Also, I was listening to the music this morning. Are you guys up for some really irritating music? I've got some on order, and it was, it's my music, and it's irritating, and I've got people that can stand up with me because it's irritating. What about paid lobbyists? Am I a paid lobbyist? No, because if I would have been, I would have been fired by now. Gosh, isn't that terrible? Also, there's this Joe Friday, right? I don't like dragging it that much, but I kind of liked the music and stuff. And he quoted something this morning, and I went, oh. He goes, "Some are born sour." You can't change some people. Some are born sour. My daughter was a sour-borner. There's nothing I could have done to fix it. I wanted to fix the person that, you know, was selling my brother's stolen guitars. Assistant District Attorney Travis Lucia said, "People are who they are." And I went, oh, what? And that actually changed my life. I stopped trying to fix things, right? Except for I'm still trying to fix the HRHOA situation, where I was charged with $9,000 for bad behavior. Do you know what my bad behavior was founded on? Gosh darn it, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Just because I interpret something some way doesn't mean it's not true, right? And so that's what we have to do. Also, the last thing is the write-off. When I was trained out of the IT into the banking industry, I had to do GL. Well, guess what? My trainer, a Hilton lady, told me we just needed to write this off, so I went and told the boss.
Thank you.
Steve Letty, followed by Scott Finley.
My name is Steve Letty. I am president of the Field Creek Homeowners Association. I am here on behalf of the 14 homeowners who live adjacent to the Arrow Creek Parkway Wall that will be discussed as agenda item number nine. Some of the residents are here to voice their thoughts directly to you. Some have submitted online comments. Some are unable to participate due to work, health, or sadly, some have passed away since this issue was first brought to the county's attention 18 years ago. At this time, I would like to thank the efforts put forth by the county employees Candy Ramos and Duane Smith, working to come to a viable, positive, responsible resolution to this wall failure. I would also like to thank Commissioner Mike Clark, who has taken the time to discuss the failure of the wall with us. We are looking forward to discussing this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Finley, followed by Mark Newman. I will distribute his document.
Please enter my comment and this document into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. The Board of County Commissioners must reject changes to the Washoe County Development Code that seeks to implement the state's new minimum standard that would enable tiny mobile homes. In 2023, Senate Bill 40 was passed, allowing the minimum square footage of manufactured housing to be changed from 1,200 square feet to 400 square feet. This is not a mandatory requirement made by the state of Nevada, but merely a suggestion. Don't tease that these tiny homes are starter homes. Only a slave could be persuaded by and appreciate such an offer. What our generation needs are family homes, not 400-square-foot mobile homes. How do you raise a family in a 400-square-foot pseudo-home? The average size of a family home in the United States is more than 12, more than 2,000 square feet. As Senate Bill 40 only suggests changing the minimum square footage of manufactured housing to 400 square, 400 square foot, I would like to make an alternate suggestion. Instead, increase the minimum square footage of manufactured housing from 1,200 square feet to 2,000 square feet until Washoe County reaches a total fertility rate of 2.1 to achieve replacement levels in social equilibrium. A minimum total fertility rate of 2.1 is required for a population to achieve replacement levels in social equilibrium. The United States has, has had a fertility rate below 2.1 since 1972. That means for more than 50 years, all gains in population growth have been through strictly immigration, resulting in an increase from roughly 210 million people in 1972 to roughly 330 million people in 2020. Nevada ties with Montana for 24th place in the U.S. among states for fertility rates. All the growth Washoe County is experiencing isn't from the native, native population replacing itself. It is from outsiders with no vested interest in the community, which you in turn are using as pawns to overwhelm and displace us with for social and political purposes. This is the stated goal of multinational investment companies like BlackRock when they talk about forcing behaviors. For these reasons, the Board of County Commissioners must reject changes to the Washoe County Development Code that seek to implement the state's new minimum standard that would enable tiny mobile homes. Implementing 400-square-foot tiny homes under the guise of affordable housing does nothing to fix the core problem, which in actuality are failed economic policies and social decay. Thank you.
Mark Newman, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. For the records, Mark Newman. I'm, as you all know, I've been elected to the Sun Valley General Improvement District. You appointed me to the Open Space and Regional Parks Commissioner, and I also sit on the Washoe County Senior Services Citizens Advisory Board and an alternate on the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I'm here today to talk to you. I spoke with Eric Brown at one of our cab meetings in Sun Valley about the fact that all the new housing and that is being built, or apartments, or any businesses that are being built, are still paying 1987, I believe, fees for every house that's being built. They pay $1,000 to parks, or 1% of the overall bid of the job. I asked that we couldn't bring forth maybe a special use tax for a lot of our apartment complexes that don't offer our large parks and everything else, that everybody else has to pay on their property tax. And I was hoping that District Attorney, I talked with Lindsay Liddell about it, and she said that the county commissioners or Mr. Brown would have to bring it in front of her to see if we could update the NRS per the new housing that is being built, or a special use tax to the apartments, if that could be initiated by you guys, or if that would also have to be put in as under the NRS. So secondly, I've been working with the seniors around the county and going to a lot of the different senior centers. And I'll tell you what, the food is pretty sad. If you go down to Catholic charities, they're eating better than our seniors. And it's a pretty sad state of affairs when you see some of those meals. Have any of you, I know Commissioner Clark has, have you seen the meals get served in a little tiny plastic container that are all soggy? And if they have bread off to the side, it's all dried out and broken apart. It's really sad that we're looking, we treat our seniors worse than we treat our animals. Thank you very much. You have a nice day.
Penny Brock, followed by Roger Edwards.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments and documents in the record per NRS. I would like to again address the on-dated Secretary of State letter to Manager Brown. At the last meeting, I mentioned I had, after Manager Brown announced that the request by Commissioner Clark for paper ballots and hand counting to be put on the ballot on the agenda could not be put on because he'd sent it to the Secretary of State's office. So as I mentioned last time, I called the Secretary of State. They had no record of it. They advised me to send a FOIA request, which I did. I had not received anything until last week, after I mentioned it at the commission meeting, and I magically got a response by the Secretary of State that on March 1st, I was going to get the requested documents, which are the letter Manager Brown sent with any attachments and so on and so forth. So that should be coming March 1st. In the meantime, we, this letter was provided, the on-dated letter from the Secretary of State's office, of which there, again, there are a lot of questions. We see that there was not a legal review provided, so we don't know what the Secretary of State was talking about. The memo from the District Attorney's Office was not attached, so we don't know what that is being talked about. The attached staff report was not included. So again, I sent a FOIA request for those documents, but it looks like the county commissioners should also be asking Manager Brown for what he did send to the Secretary of State's office, and if, when he got this letter, if those attachments were provided. The second thing is, this letter from the Secretary of State did not tell you you couldn't put it on the agenda to request for paper ballots. He just said it would not be a sensible exercise. If you look at the bottom of the letter, it refers to Senate Bill 216. I looked at that, and it's shocking. This was passed at the last legislative session. It discriminates against our tribal population by not allowing them to vote by paper ballots, should this pass. Also, it discriminates against the non-trivial members, meaning non-trivial, all of us, because the clerk is going to have a meeting with the tribal members, but not us. That is discrimination.
Roger Edwards, followed by Gary Schmidt.
Good morning, fellow public servants. Roger Edwards, for the record, please enter my comments into the permanent record as Have a great day today. It's wonderful outside, storm on the way. Great to live in the mountains. We need to pay attention to Ms. Brock's comments. She does a lot of homework, and she's not fooling. She's technically very, very correct. And it's just a one more example of how the citizens don't get their due minute in the sun. When they bring a comment forward, it needs to be evaluated by somebody, your or our electees. And as my sign says, I'm here to lobby for the rights of the everyday citizen, like I've always done, 50 years in public service so far. I've managed people in every walk of life, and I have also managed to put my name in a list for the opening at the Library Board of Trustees, and come to find out, there's like 50 other of us that put their names on the list. So, you know, it's wonderful. We got that ball rolling, and hopefully something conservative will come out of that. I'm just here to complain about the fact that here's one more agenda without Commissioner Herman's opposite, item on there. And, you know, you can't get these items on the, we don't, we can't get a chance to discuss this. to discuss this, we meeting you unless it gets on the agenda. You folks need to have a better program of requests. If one or two of you wants something on the agenda, why isn't it? This is a nice, short agenda. I like that. I'll be able to get out before noon probably. But there's a lot of things you're not talking about, and we need to do that, okay? And I'm here to defend the rights of the public, and I always will be. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Gary Schmidt, followed by Janet Butcher. Looks like Mr. Schmidt has, has, okay, documents to distribute. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please place my comments on the record in detail in my exhibit that please attach to the minutes as provided by NRS, the open meeting law. You know, there's a process, the court requires a process called due diligence. And it basically requires you to do a minimum amount of investigation prior to filing a judicial action to make sure there's a, your actions not frivolous and it has a proper cause of, it is a proper cause of action. I've started a round of new public records requests last night and will continue over the days or weeks to come based upon a situation that has developed. And that may seem onerous and redundant, but I can assure you they're not as onerous as the discovery process under oath would be after a filing in judicial court. The, you're all aware of a conflict between myself and the GID, actually, a conflict between the community of Gerlach and the Gerlach GID. That's ongoing. And as a result of my exposing their criminalities, the GID has filed an abusive, frivolous, retaliatory nuisance complaint against some of my property that's in Gerlach that's not based on fact or law. I asked for an additional 30-day extension in this notice of violation to discuss it further on December 4th. I inquired again on December 18th of what happened to my request for a 30-day extension. On December 20th, I was informed by Mr. Gissinger, that my request was denied. And oh, by the way, we issued you a citation 10 days ago. Not a very fair or appropriate process. I've passed out, I attempted to appeal that decision and the body of that complaint to the Board of Adjustment. I was denied that opportunity, a violation of state law. In the exhibit I've passed out here, it talks about NRS 278310. And condensed down or distilled down, it basically says, "Appeals to the Board of Adjustment may be taken by any person aggrieved by the decision of any administrative officer or agency based upon or made in the course of the administration or enforcement of the provisions of any zoning regulation." I was denied that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Butcher, followed by Nick Martin.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes per NRS verbatim. First, I want to talk about the elections. I don't think we should drop the issue. I think that the commissioners here and Manager Brown would be extremely upset with the Secretary of State for pointing the finger at RROV. The Secretary of State stated that it was at the inability of the clerks, their, and the two ROVs, to not follow through with the second step. So, he's pointing the finger at them. But yet, that's not really what happened. So, I think you, you guys would be really upset. But all of this could be very easily remedied if we could get to the crux of the problem, and it's the damn machines and it's the damn software. Bottom line is, is it's not working. It's not working correctly. In 2020, there was somebody who, who stated at a congressional hearing that there were, I think it was 140,000 invalid votes in Nevada. And I think you guys would really want to, to get to the bottom of that. The second thing I want to make a comment about is interruptions. Last May, I, I was not at the commission meeting, but I listened online, and there was one gentleman who got up here to speak, and he was interrupted 28 times. One person, 28 times. And I believe that when one of the other commissioners is speaking, that it is extremely rude to interrupt them. And when you, when they are interrupted, the smile like a chaser cat comes across the face. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Martin, followed by Tia Nielsen.
Good morning, Nick Martin. Nearly a 50-year resident of Washoe County. I spoke at the last meeting, and I spoke about how conservatives are being railroaded at every strata of government and how it's happening here. I mentioned that when there's a contentious issue, that this place is packed with left-wingers, if you will. I don't know what else to call them, some even being from out of state. I mean, when, when a woman gets up to speak and identifies herself as someone from Sacramento and is allowed to speak to the laws of Washoe County, that's, that's evidence to me. Same thing with the library board meeting. You know, normally a library board meeting, 15, 15, 20 people max, 150 show up for that, same situation, same exact situation. And, and it's, you know, at, at the, you can see it too in the dual levels of justice in this country. You know, it's from the, the way the Department of Justice twists like a Hydra to keep from charging Hunter Biden. It's Donald Trump being charged for the same exact thing that Joe Biden did, and Biden isn't charged. It's the BLM rioters running free with virtually no punishment, and the January 6th folks being locked up for extended periods, for some of them for very light crimes, if a crime at all. And we see it at the local level, too. We see it here. So, we have a, a business manager for the county, county, with, with tons of evidence of him driving drunk, with his wife not just being pulled over.
There are rules and decorum. We do not discuss staff. You can speak to the commission, certainly discuss about the issues of the day, but please do not bring up staff. Thank you.
All right, I won't bring up staff. But a certain woman, I have to say a certain woman was pulled over.
Sir.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Yes, attacks without any evidence are not public comment and will not be tolerated.
Pretty sure there was evidence.
Thank you, DA Candace, sir.
If you saw it something personally, please do not bring it up, and it has no relevance to the proceedings today, what a wife did.
Sir, you do not get to argue with the DA or me. You can continue on with your comments, certainly want to hear those, but please do not attack our staff.
It looks like I'll have to close. And in closing, let me say, though I'm not a religious man, God bless Robert Beatles for continuing the work started by Donald Trump of pulling down the curtain on the insidious plans on the left for this country. God bless him. It's our turn to be triggered, folks. It's our turn, and we are. Have a good day.
Tia Nielsen, followed by Matthew Wilke.
I'd like to apologize. I thought my phone was off. My name's Tia. I don't need to go on any public record. I'll just speak to you, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. And I just appreciate everyone that's here today to give their different points of view. When I come to this meeting, I come with an open mind just to hear what people have to say and share their different opinions. So, right now, I felt that I wanted to speak up about two things. One is, first of all, I'll just say that I'm a retired school teacher from California, but I've been a seven-year resident here in Reno. It feels home, just like where I've been up and down the coast in California. I've always been an advocate for students. No matter what I believe, I always felt like I needed to do or say, teach, you know, the curriculum, whatever, that was best for the students, what I was hired to do. And if students asked me questions, I would go ahead and answer them personally, not in front of the whole class, if they wanted to know certain things about if I was a Christian or anything else. The thing I always believed in, though, was open debate, always open ideas, listening to other people's views. You always learn something. I'm, even as a, I'm a senior now, and I still feel like I'm learning all the time. So, what I would like to do is to share that opposing views are wonderful, and I don't go for them, I don't listen to opposing views for the idea of being, to create a problem. I love debate. Debate brings truth, brings things to the surface, and I love it all. So, I'd like to share that I was a part of the caucus. I was a person standing at that election caucus this last time instead of the primary. I stood at the door because the door was so heavy it wouldn't stay open. So, I stood there for hours, keeping that door open in the cold, watching so many people who wanted to feel that their vote counted, and it did because everything was documented. There were people with full families, babies, standing in the cold, willing to stand up and say, my vote counts. And I do feel that the caucus made people's vote count, and that's why I worked for it. I don't mean that the primary didn't count. I mean, I wasn't there. I can't speak for that. But I'd like to say that the caucus really did work. I do believe in identifying yourself so that people really know who you are. We did it for years. I voted my, you know, since I was 18, I've been voting. And I do feel that my voice was heard at that time. Now, I am concerned, though, that why do we need a caucus to make your voice be heard? Basically, the caucus was just what I used to do for years. You just show up, show your ID, you're in that precinct area, whatever, and you, you give your vote, and you feel confident your vote counts. I am concerned now with the election process, and I hope that it does. I hope everyone's voice does count, no matter what they do. But I do feel like this most inspiring thing I ever went to was being a part of the caucus, holding that door open for all these wonderful people who stood in the cold just to have their vote count. So, that's what I'm speaking to today. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Wilke.
Good morning, Chair Hill and members of the commission. My name is Matthew Wilke, for the record. I did want to say, I just left a meeting with Mr. Grant Denton this morning. I met with him regarding some safe parking and how that would look like. I also set up a meeting with him to do a ride-along next Tuesday morning to see some cleaning, some things that his group is doing. I was not here last week because I was severely ill, but I did watch at home, and I want to mention and bring up some of the things that were highlighted during that last meeting and some of the things, points made by Officer Sulfarino. He mentioned in that meeting that passing that similar ordinance, which I know has to come back in a couple of weeks for the second reading. But I did want to mention a few of those things. He did mention that when Sparks and City of Reno enacted these ordinances, it displaced people further and further out from services, resources, and the shelter, pushing them to the end of the World Camp, far away from those help. How, how can we do the same thing over and expect a different result? That seems like insanity. He also stated, "The purpose of this ordinance is for a small service-resistant population of 62 individuals that are resistant." My thing is, how, it may be very well, how can you mandate these services when if you, they're, I'm sorry, you're being faced with arrest and more likely lose your car anyways? Sulfarino also did admit that they have made six arrests so far. Six, six arrests for people doing things that are legal. Why are they trying to criminalize people for simply trying to exist when there's criminal ordinances already in place for people committing criminal acts? Sulfarino also stated, "You cannot arrest your way out of this problem." My question is, why are we then creating ordinances doing just that? I also want to address the lack of SEABAB meetings. I have now, at this point, have individually or asked every single member on SEABAB, either privately or in their capacity during the meeting, to call a meeting. Two of those members have told me that they would reach out to the chair and ask for a meeting. So, either they have lied to me or they have not done so yet. So, I want to put on the record again, if you can call a meeting for a SEABAB, that'd be great. And I also encourage you, I know, to rewrite the ordinance before it comes back in the next couple of weeks and eliminate the misdemeanor offense. I do know that a few of you on social media post about the Built for Zero campaign on your social medias, which is absolutely not what this ordinance would do. So, please rewrite it, take away the misdemeanor offense, call a SEABAB, and don't be hypocrites, please. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take a short break and resume the rest of the meeting at 11 o'clock. Thank you. Good morning. We are back for the 11 o'clock portion of the Board of County Commissioners meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Manager, we are now on item four.
In county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, I would just mention to the public that there is a broadband subsidy program called the Affordable Connectivity Program, or ACP, that has been in place for the last couple of years, and is, the public should know that it is, there is a chance that the fund may run out here by the end of April. And I know from talking to a lot of people in our communities, particularly seniors and, and others, they are participating in this program that provides significant discounts. We're talking, I think, $30 a month for broadband service for eligible households. So if anyone has concerns about this, I encourage you to reach out to your senators or Congressman Amadee's office. They are aware of this, obviously. There is a bill in Congress that could extend the program at least through the end of the year, if it, if it were to get some love. But it is of concern to many in our community who use this service to get broadband access in their households. That's all I have for today, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, appreciate you raising that concern and making sure that our community knows who to reach out to on that program. Commissioner Andrea, have you signed in next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to request, well, first, I'd like to share some information. I reached out to the State of Nevada Controller, Andy Matthews, about the launch of Checkbook Nevada, and really had a great conversation in terms of the infrastructure that's currently in place for the state with full transparency, that's even searchable, so you can see all the expenditures for various items in various ways. And that conversation led to the state controller having a meeting with himself and staff to roll this out to counties and cities for the same transparency. And it was very encouraging. It really, I think, creates an opportunity for even leveraging all of the expense that went into that particular platform that's already built. So having that ability for us to take advantage, if you will, of that opportunity and the cost savings, but more importantly, being accountable to taxpayers on where every dollar is spent, in this case, for the county. So I would like to ask that county manager look at staff reaching out to the state controller, who is going to welcome the call, so that we can look at the opportunities to blaze that path and have the same implementation and process in place for the county.
Great. I know the City of Reno had an open paycheck or open checkbook on their website, so I'm sure that's something that we could try to tackle. Thank you, Commissioner Andrea. Do we have any other?
I do, I do feel obligated, though, to share that if anyone does want to go onto the site, you can go to checkbooknv.gov, and you can check it out yourself. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other commissioners have announcements? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Newman for pointing out the comments he made about the food that we're serving at the senior center. They've been harping about this for, for months now. We just need to have, we need to get this resolved. The food that we're serving isn't very appetizing. You think about, we're dealing with the low bidder who's dealing with the low bidder. So we've got a company that's buying the least favorable, certainly not the top-of-the-line ingredients, and preparing these meals. I mean, the stuff that's being served, you know, the county doesn't like to hear about this, but, I mean, when you get broccoli at a senior center, it's, it's the stalk of the broccoli that most of us cut off and throw out to the birds, or gets fed to the garbage disposal. So that's just an example, but we've got to be able to do better for, for our seniors. So thanks, Mark, for, for bringing that up. I go to the senior centers on a regular basis, have lunch there, and it's, it's just, it's not something anybody would want to serve their parents, or their aunt, or their kids, or anybody else. So many folks, this is their only meal of the day, small portions, and very unappetizing. So I think that's something where the county needs to figure out how we can do better at. That's the first point. Penny Brock made some good comments. Roger Edwards seconded those comments, and I'm going to third those comments. We need to take a good, hard look at what we're doing with elections. I want to know why Nye County has a different election process than the other counties. If it's, seems to be working in Nye County, maybe we should take a look at it here. Not to say that we have to change, not to say we have to do anything, but I'd like to get this on the agenda so we can have a discussion about it. You know, right now, we've got a kind of divided board, two vote one way, two vote the other way, and there's another commissioner that seems to be not on record for, for much of what we're talking about as far as transparency. So I'd like to get that. I've asked for it to be on the agenda, and yet again, I'm turned down and riding from the chair. So it just has the appearance that the chair and the county manager are working in concert to keep this off of the, just to keep it off a vote. I mean, let's just have a vote. I don't have to win. I'm not here to win the vote. I want to hear the discussion about how we get to where we need to be. So I like to bring that up. Next, I'm going to enter a couple of documents in the public record. One was an email from Manager Brown, basically saying that he didn't appreciate the, the rank-and-file folks working at the county, reaching out to commissioners. I've got to be 180 degrees off on that. I think as county commissioners, who vote on the budget, who vote on many things here, the more information we have, the better. If somebody has, and I don't consider it being a whistleblower, I consider sharing information. So we need to have that open line of communication. If the manager wants people to contact him, that's fine. And if they want to contact me, I think that should be fine as well. If they contact the manager, how am I going to be made aware of it? There's very few things here that the county likes to share with me without, it's almost like pulling teeth to get a lot of information. So when somebody reaches out to me, you know, many times, it isn't something I want to hear, but many times, as a leader, it's something you need to hear, so you can address the issue or take it up with the proper channel. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark, just a note, since I know you don't want me to interrupt you, I would appreciate if you would limit your intimidating remarks about commissioners and not speak about those on the dais. Vice Chair Herman, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of items. I, I want to agree that the comments from Penny Brock were very good. She is a very thorough researcher and, and does a wonderful job for us, bringing information to us. And if it's possible, I would certainly like Pam Dar to have someone from the county kind of explain to her about the expenses that she was discussing in her comments, if that's possible. So the next article I'd like to get into is about a misunderstanding at the last meeting. Since I wasn't able to save her the whole meeting, I, I looked at the, the recording of the meeting, and I thought, oh, I got to bring this. Okay, so the letter from Mr. Aguilar, and that's what this is about. Number one, I'm sorry that I wasn't here to explain it last week, but my computer has been threatening me for a long time, and it, it finally said on the screen, "This has expired." So my computer died. So then I was in the process of having cataracts removed from my eyes, and that was making my eyes not work so good. So when I, I, I never got the, actually, I didn't get the, the letter that the argument was about, or disagreement was about, last week. So it's my fault that I, I was just not, not able to handle that. But it came on my county phone, so it was, it's very small print on there, and, and I just missed it somehow, evidently. But I only, when I went to print it about two days ago, all I got was a part of it. It was all scrunched up, kind of. So I just wanted to explain that. So we didn't have any more, anybody blaming anybody for it. So I, I did finally get it, and here it is, but it doesn't have the whole thing anyhow, so I don't, I don't have a copy of the whole thing. And while I'm talking about that letter, I was, two things here. And that those questions were handled very well by other folks, so I won't go into a whole bunch. I know it'd be nice to have some answers about what, I'd like to see the letters on both sides, so I know what we're talking about in this letter. And, and since it seems that, I'm just assuming that I'm correct, that it's, there's no stopping anybody from putting my election integrity bill on the agenda. I just hope that, hope that I've made that clear, that I really want to see it on the agenda. So thank you much for that. And then I was wondering if we could have a, have N.com and explain to us their times, their timeframe for getting that McCarran exit off of, onto North 395 open? It's really make, it's hard for a lot of folks. So if there's any possibility of getting them on here, so we know, so we can tell them, tell them exactly what's going on with that. So that's all I have for right now. Oh, wait, one more. This, this is short. There's a gentleman that has, was, I think, born and raised in Gerlach. He's Bruno's amazing grandson, Willie. Now, this, this young man, or this gentleman is exceptionally dedicated county employee. He doesn't take vacations, he doesn't receive any compensation for the many extra things he does above and beyond the call of duty for Washoe County. He keeps Gerlach rolling, and I feel it is high time that we let him know how grateful we are. So I'll leave that up to our county manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have a quick thank you to give to Commissioner Garcia, who has worked very hard with our incredible HR department, who I also want to give some thanks to and gratitude to, to clean up some of the unintended consequences that happened during our Corn Fairy study and, and salary adjustments that we made for the entire county staff of employees who are in the same classification, who came in earlier than other employees, who were what Commissioner Garcia called, they had a leapfrog. And so they essentially, we heard about this during public comment, they essentially were paid more than someone, a newer employee was paid more than someone who was hired, you know, much before than they, and had more experience than they did. So HR has gone through some exhaustive work with our Washoe County Employee Association, as well as employees who have been able to go through a formal process of appeal for that process. That has closed, and, and they are making salary adjustments on the appropriate employees. And I just appreciate, Commissioner Garcia, you working in the background to make this happen for employees, and I think employees need to understand how committed this board is to making sure there's equity with our staff. There's always going to be leapfrogging, if, if you'll excuse that term, with different situations in the county, but we definitely wanted to clear this up and make sure that Corn Fairy was implemented in a very fair way, and I hope that employees feel that they've been heard. And I really want to say thank you to HR. I know it's an emotional issue when you, when you're talking about your salary, and I feel like we at the county need to remember, and I'm speaking to all staff, we all are, need to work together, and we all need to understand we're on Team Washoe County, and treat each other with, with respect and the dignity that we deserve. So hopefully, employees will keep that in mind when they're working with HR and other departments, and thank you again for everyone's hard work on that piece. Commissioner Clark, I have you signed in again.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Commissioner Garcia's efforts in, in making these 34 people whole, but 34 people is approximately 1% of the county workforce. So we've got to, as far as I'm concerned, we have about another 99% of our rank-and-file folks, and many of those folks are unhappy with the situation. So respect and dignity starts with equal pay and making sure that everyone's comfortable with what took place. Just comparing some staff getting their raises early, and, you know, it just, it just didn't set right. And I think if we had a time machine, we could go back, we could probably do things differently. I think everybody would agree that things should have been done a little bit differently. But moving forward, this county, these citizens that are served in our county, the, the county would be absolutely nothing without the excellent employees that work here. And so I always want to stand up for the county employees. Running a county department for a number of years, I can attest to the good work ethic and the hard work of the folks that, that work in the county. So seeing it on a different level than from here at the dais, just watching folks on a day-to-day basis work, I just absolutely salute and applaud our county employees. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move to item five. Mr. Manager?
Item five is a presentation from Lieutenant Colonel Jason Haynes, Sierra Army Depot Commander, about current Sierra Army Depot initiatives towards the U.S. Army priorities of people, readiness, and modernization, and its effects on the Sierra Nevada region. Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks, Lieutenant Colonel Jason Haynes, the Commander, Sierra Army Depot. Request we can approach the clerk to enter in the Sierra Resiliency Review Report.
Absolutely.
All right. So this report, it's a document that we're passing out, highlights about two years worth of partnership with the community to build some redundancy and resiliency, both in the community, in the greater Hurlong, Doyle, Lassen County, but it also affects Washoe County, and then bringing some opportunities for growth and investment throughout the Army Depot. One of the great things that came out of this investment was the DCEP grant, so the Defense Communities Infrastructure Program grant from the DOD, of about a tune of $9.7 million to add some infrastructure ability to our power. So we draw from the California side, so this will build an interchange on NV Energy's side, so that I can purchase power from Nevada as well. So we do, although I am in California, we do, we do partnership with, with the, with the Nevada side as, as much as we can. So those unfamiliar with Sierra Army Depot, I don't know how, the last time someone came to talk here, so I'll just briefly go over kind of what we do. We are, we deliver responsive material readiness and unique sustainment solutions, which support the Army and the Joint Force operations across, across the nation and the globe. Sierra is the Army's premier and actually largest facility dedicated to equipment retrograde, regeneration, reutilization, redistribution. So what that really means is, we bring equipment back from the field to the depot, and then bring it back to record, so that it can be shipped back out to the warfighter, or we store it for later use. So essentially, our operations are saving taxpayer dollars by putting back equipment to the warfighter. to the warfighter and not having to go back and procure it and buy it again. So today, I'd like to talk three topics, as, uh, Mr. Brown had brought up, our workforce, so the people, Sierra Army Depot resilience and readiness, and then the future of our modernization. So on, on the people, um, uh, I'd like to say that we, uh, are, one of, one of our strengths is, uh, is bringing economic, uh, strength to both Washoe and Lassen County. We're the single largest employer in Lassen County, uh, so I have about 1,200 civilian employees. I'm the only green suitor, I'm the only Army, uh, person on Sierra Army Depot right now. We're looking to hire a couple more, but right now I'm the only. So, uh, I'm also looking to hire, looking to hire about 100 new people. I'm always recruiting, uh, for employment. We're, we're in a year of growth. So about 30% of my employees reside in Nevada, mostly exclusively, I'd say, in Washoe County. So estimated, uh, economic impact to both California and Nevada, I, I, the last time we checked was about 470 million. So, uh, the area that we, um, cover, uh, with, with employment also is about, I'd say, my workforce is 18% veterans. So we're definitely on the front line to, uh, support soldiers and airmen, sailors and Marines. And we, we like to hire them as well. So that's kind of our people, uh, theme being that, um, we, we, uh, we definitely know that our strength comes from the people that we hire and, and in the community. Also, uh, on readiness, uh, what you'll see kind of in that document, Sierra Army Depot is the go-to organization for unique sustainment solutions. I don't know if you want to go to the next slide for me? So this, this kind of breaks down what, what we do, um, and, and our initiatives. So this, I said storage, so I have about 36,000 acres with no urban encroachment. So that means I, I store all the equipment out there in the high desert. And what, what we do is classify it, bring it, bring it back to record, as I say, with about 7 million square feet of warehousing. So I store a lot of equipment to, um, essentially, uh, save, save taxpayer dollars by putting it back to record. And then what we do is, we are also the DOD's largest FedEx shipper. So I appreciate the roads being clear for all my FedEx trucks. For material readiness, it's kind of our big, big thing. We also are the center of technical excellence, as you can see at the top, for all the fuel and water systems for all, all across the nation and the Army and the, uh, some Air Force operations. Uh, I also have operational project stocks. So if you were to look us on, on Google Maps and look above, uh, at Sierra Army Depot, you'd see all those tanks lighting up. Uh, all those are, uh, operational readiness fleet that'll, that'll float for anything that needs to be done in future operations. We, we do soldier support. We also do all of the reserves, um, all across the nation. They're OCIE and CIF, so like all of their clothing, uh, and equipment, we ship it out of Sierra Army Depot. Uh, we also do all the plate repair for all of the United States Army. So any plate that goes in a vest for, uh, a flak vest, a bulletproof, uh, we do all the repair and we, we, we classify them, bring them, bring them in, make sure they're good to go, and then ship them out so people are protected. And the, one of the biggest things we, we do is parts harvest and, and, and pull. So all those tanks you see out there, we pull all the parts, um, and then ship them out as, and saving the Army money so we don't have to go and buy them again. And we can ship anywhere in the world. Uh, we have, uh, an enormous amount of rail infrastructure with three classification yards. Uh, and then it also helps, we're right off the 395 corridor and I-80, um, so that we can get to locations such as Travis and, uh, Motco out on the coast, um, to ship our equipment. We also have a 10,000-foot airfield, uh, which is kind of underutilized. Uh, we, we like to, um, bring in aircraft for training. We also have Top Gun come out, come out from, uh, Fallon area to do training, uh, which is a great partnership. So, uh, like to say that we, we, we are prepared to grow. In this time, uh, the new chief of staff of the Army came in, uh, in the summer and he made some decisions to unburden the lowest level leaders across the force. So what that really means is, uh, we're going to bring back that equipment out of the, out of the force, uh, to kind of make sure their property books are, are light and they're able to do the combat operations. And we're going to bring that equipment back to Sierra Army Depot. So I see us in a time of growth with an enormous amount of opportunity. So we're leaning forward into that growth and change. Uh, so what we're doing is modernizing the depot. Uh, so we're transforming from post World War II era infrastructure into much more of a modern and efficient and advanced, uh, logistics center. Uh, so we also, we're, the closest project to us is about a 40-mile railroad and transportation facility, uh, work over the next two years. Um, so a lot of, a lot of railroad increase opportunity for, for building, uh, and then on, both on the interchange through Nevada and in the, the northern interchange through California. Uh, we have about 21, um, projects over the next 15 years, estimated about 38 million. I also have about 71 million of upcoming projects awaiting programming. So that's opportunity for local businesses to bid on and take, uh, take some of the work and keep it in the local area for, 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 uh, the United States government. Uh, so just like, like I said, thanks for giving the opportunity to come out here. Like to maybe spend some more time, invite anyone that wants to come out to the depot, uh, as an opportunity to see what, what we do for the Army and how we bring readiness to the, the force, uh, and then how we, we serve our nation. So I'll, I'll give back my almost three minutes.
Well, wonderful. Thank you for that presentation. I think it gives folks a good idea about what you're doing. And I know Vice Chair Herman requested, uh, you to come and present to us, and I'm so glad she did. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything?
I just wanted to tell you thank you again so much for, for coming and presenting to us because we, we all should know how important your base is.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I live in your district. I'm not, I'm not a California resident. I live in Washoe County.
Yay.
Thank you so much for coming down. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions or comments? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thanks, thanks for all the good work you do. And, and it is a very important component to our county, the payroll that's generated in, in your base and, and the good work that your, your team does. So, so thank you. And I'd like to, uh, come out and take a tour if I could.
Absolutely.
If we could that arrange. Thank you.
Yeah. That gentleman right there is my Public Affairs Officer. He coordinated.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day. And I think Chief Judge Lynn Jones is delayed. Am I correct in that? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Then we will skip item six, come back to that. Thank you. And we will now go to item seven, our consent items. And I'm looking to the board to see if folks have anything that they'd like to pull or have questions on. And Commissioner Clark, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On, uh, item seven, C2, um, I just want to ask the, uh, Ms. Canderas, uh, the Canderas, if, uh, I need to disclose, or should I disclose that, uh, I've given money to the, discretionary funds to the church that owns that land, uh, that we're thinking about buying?
Commissioner Clark, um, you do not, since that was on the public record.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other board members? I'm not seeing any. Uh, so I am looking for a motion for consent.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola.
Second.
And thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And Madam Clerk, I see we do have one public comment.
We do. We have Gary Schmidt signed in.
For the record, Gary Schmidt, please, uh, include my comments in the record in detail. As a way of background, uh, I'm sure I've, uh, probably attended more county commission meetings than all five commissioners combined. So I've been attending them for 52 years. There was a couple of years in the 1980s where I actually had a better attendance record than any of the five county commissioners at that time, uh, at the meetings. Let me say that, uh, item, uh, 7E2, recommendation to appoint Eric Crump as Director of Community Services effective February 27th, with an annual salary of $205,400. Let me say that, uh, just generally speaking, having been in business for myself for a half a century and having observed this county for a half a century, actually been in business for 60 years, um, the organization is real top-heavy. It's not run like an efficient business. When I call in, I still own property in Washoe County, substantial property. I've moved out of the county. I live in, uh, one of the remaining free counties, uh, in Nevada, Story County. I live in Virginia City. You know, this is a position that was created fairly recently, within the last year or two. Was, this was authorized within the last year or two, has been vacant for the last year or two. And during that time period, when I call community development or community services, I have a hard time getting a live person. Callbacks are not, uh, uh, very punctual. I am informed and reasonably, therefore reasonably, that a lot of people are still working from home. COVID is over. I would recommend, basically, that rather than spend $205,000 on a top-end bureaucrat, that you hire four more workers in community development at $50,000 each to answer the phone and answer questions. Or if you want to upgrade a little bit, hire three more at $66,000 and maybe you'll get an actual answer that has some credibility. Because it's not working and loading the top end is not going to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, I do, before we, uh, take the vote, I just wanted to, uh, welcome Eric to the new position of Director of Community Services. Mr. Crump, you're going to be great in that position. And, uh, celebrate 7D1, the recreational yard turf for, uh, the Wittenberg Hall project. Those kids deserve a great place to be outdoors and our manager saw that and advocated for that project. So thank you so much for making that happen. Um, with a motion and a second, I have Vice Chair Herman signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in response to what I said a few minutes ago about, uh, Pam Dar's request to understand why we're spending 300,000, could, could we maybe have, instead of what I requested before, have somebody explain?
On 7D1?
Oh, 7D1, yes.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, the, the field at Jan Evans, um, if you've been over there in the last two years, uh, it's the original turf that was installed. It, it's bad, it's in bad repair and needs to be replaced. It's actually a hazard for folks to get hurt when, when the turf has frayed and, and that kind of thing. So that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman, anything else? Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola and a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. All right. And I think that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going to go back up to item six. Uh, Mr. Manager?
Okay. Item six is a presentation from Chief Judge Lynn Jones, providing an update on the Second Judicial District Court workload in select programs.
Welcome. I know you had to run here, so thank you so much.
Oh, thank you for accommodating me. Are you, do they run it or do, okay. All right. Good afternoon, I guess by now, almost. I'm in trial, so I appreciate and thank you, respected Chair Hill and respected members, as well as staff, and thank you to the public. It's an honor to be here. On days like today, I almost feel like I'm as old as that courthouse in that picture. And, uh, we'll talk a little bit about that. Our Second Judicial District Court is made up of 16 judges. I'm the chief. And we have nine in the general jurisdiction, which means we do civil and criminal. And we have six in the family division, as well as masters. In 2023, it was a banner year in many, many ways. We issued, as a court, 292,000 written orders. We, um, heard, heard 42,000 events. And we held 698 settlement conferences to resolve matters without trial. Our judicial trial days were phenomenal. Uh, we had a record number of trials, which I'm going to show you. Uh, and that resulted in 717 judicial trial days. Uh, myself, I was in trial for over two months, um, meaning that I had to be issuing my orders, doing what I need to do behind the scenes. I would say for every day, every hour that we are in court, for a judge, it's about three hours of preparation. For staff, it goes to five to 10 hours. So it's, I'm so grateful to our amazing staff and the people that you funded, uh, in our budget that have been there every step of the way with us. And I have to say, I believe that the employees of this Second Judicial District Court are second to none. They are phenomenal and they actually honor our county every day. We had 17,000 new cases, uh, 14,000 record requests completed, and 17,000 filings processed each month. That means what our filing office, um, does. Every day, accepting documents, responding to requests. This is our jury trials, where you can see 103 jury trials. And you can see, obviously in COVID, it was less. But even if you go back two years previous, it was amazing. And it is resolving criminal cases. It is, uh, getting them to sentencing, the people that are found guilty, and it's making our community safer by our hard work. Um, one of the most exciting things that we've done is, and I appreciate because the county as a whole has really embraced the challenges we have with mental health issues. And they permeate not only all the programs that you manage and oversee, but it permeates the court. And in an innovative, I think I will put this down as one of my smarter moves I made. I appointed, um, now presiding Judge Walker to basically handle community outreach for mental issue, mental health issues, internal mental health issues with regard to defendants. And he's handling, we created a new court, a mental competency court, because people were, I'm sure you heard from Sheriff Balaum, waiting for treatment so long. They're up at the jail untreated, waiting to go to Lakes Crossing, sometimes up to six months to a year. And so through, what we did was creatively combine to do this court. Um, it was officially started in September 2023. So it's a 34 decrease, 34-day decrease in mental competency timelines. What does that mean to you? What it means to you is that these 34 less jail days and 34, um, additional, even if they're going to treatment, that they are getting better. They are coming to competency. They are getting treatment. And creatively, um, there is diversionary efforts. That's basically individuals that shouldn't necessarily go through the criminal justice system, that, that need help. And these are some of the statistics regarding this. The other thing that I think is really a sign of collaboration, I often refer, refer people from my Young Offender Court, um, is to the city of Reno's, the, the from my Young Offender Court, is to the city of Reno's, the Munich Court's, Community Court, and it's held at the library. And when individuals come out, there's all these resources that are people at tables that are waiting to help them. And so also, it was a banner year, this is sort of, seems random, but I had to pick and choose. One of our other great challenges is interpreters. There are only about 14 certified Spanish interpreters in the state. And we are constantly juggling in our cases, whether it's on our docket for our crim cases or it's trial. I actually did a trial and the defendant only spoke Russian. So the whole trial, we had an interpreter. I consider myself to be well-studied. I'm not very, one of my biggest weaknesses is geography. So every time I see one of these different interpreter cases, like the Chukis was mine, it's from the Isle of Chuk, Micronesia, I look it up and take it as a learning moment, but it's really phenomenal. We've already had at least four other languages since this slide was prepared that we have to provide an interpreter for. This is our very near and dear to me, in addition to our assignments in civil and criminal and family court cases, and that's our specialty courts. And our specialty courts have increased. We have various different courts. We have Young Offender, that one's mine. It's 18 to 27-year-old people trying to intervene, get them clean and sober, they have to get a job, they have to go to counseling, they have to pay all their fees. And then when we graduate them, which we have a very high success rate in all of our specialty courts, between 80 and 98%, they include Veterans Court, Young Offender, Adult Drug Court, Medication Assisted Court, Prison Reentry Court, and I don't think I've forgotten any others. If I have, I would just, oh, DUI Court. We have about 400 participants and our success just keeps growing. And what does this mean to you? What this means to you is these are people who are either on probation or they are on a diversion status, which the benefit is that they have their felony removed from their record at the end. It's very powerful for young people because people, it used to be shocking for somebody to have one felony. Now it isn't. And some younger, particularly people, don't understand that they're collecting felonies that are drug-related. And while it may not be violent, it means they're going to be headed to prison. And this is a great use of state monies. We've acquired federal grants as well. We are woefully, woefully underfunded in our mental health court. Our mental health court serves between 60 and 70 participants and the allocated funds we have for it are just over $21,000. It just simply isn't enough. And so we will be really working on that. Part of the issue that comes with federal monies, even though we seek them out, is, you know, the reporting, all of the restrictions. And so we really are aggressively looking for other sources to fund our specialty courts in particular and our movement with regard to assisting with issues relating to mental illness. And so, our mission is to provide timely, fair, and efficient administration of justice under the law in a manner that instills and sustains the public's confidence in the judicial system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great report. I will look to my fellow commissioners, see if anyone has comments or questions. Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Chief Justice Jones, for everything, for having an amazing group of people that are so dedicated to making our community really not only safe, but more importantly, looking at creating paths of success so we don't have return recidivism. And I'm wondering, when you mentioned, it's a significant number, so I wrote it down, the 80 to 90% success rate you have at the Second Judicial District Court in terms of specialty courts. What do you think is the nugget? Like, that is a really high number of success and I'm just wondering what those contributions are.
I think it is, and I do the assignments, I think it's the placement of the right judges. For instance, for Vet Court, we usually require that it is someone that has military experience. I think it's that connection with the judge, because our staffs are experts and that's who they check in with. And you know, Sober 24, they do their testing, but it's coming before that judge and having that judge look at you and be kind, but with consequences. So we hold them accountable, we have to give them the sanctions, and we have graduated, we have community service, we have admonishments, we make them write essays sometimes. I can tell you, in the Young Offender Court, a lot of time, it just simply is talking with them. And as simple as saying, "It was really great to see you today." And so I think that, also, I think it's the passion of the judges and our amazing specialty court staff. They are simply remarkable in their contacts with the various participants. And I also have to give a lot of recognition to parole and probation, because we have assigned officers and they are really on it with these participants. They do not want them to fail, they want them to succeed. And so, again, that makes our state and our county proud.
May I have a follow-up?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that. I also really want to thank you for your statement in terms of, you know, having this foresight with Judge Walker to look at creating this attention to this behavioral health crisis that we now have in our community. And I really also want to recognize you and the efforts of all who participated in the Health Behavioral Health Summit. It was really a great, great summit. And it's my understanding it was the first of its kind, and I'm hoping that we can continue that, because as we have, as we're entering into these new paths, maybe they're not new, but they are for some of us that aren't involved in seeing the vision that you have and the result and the outcomes that you have, I think it's really important that more information is shared to the community about what the crisis is. And that although there may be consequences where someone may end up incarcerated for whatever the reason, the fact that there is some front end that can actually not have that be the only, only result and outcome is really powerful. So I want to thank you for having a vision, which I know you have great visions, so keep the visions coming and the forethought to really address this, because it really is not just, obviously, there's an obligation to follow the law, but it's also the people. And that's what I'm hearing you say. So thank you very, very much for all you do and for being the great leader you are. Thank you.
Well, you're kind. I would just say this, that this issue affects every one of you in your district, every single one of you. And anything you see, anything that you want to have the court look at, address, help with, mobilize, please contact me or contact Judge Walker, because the conversation has to keep going and we have to help everyone in each of your districts.
Thank you. Any other board members? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, Judge Jones. Thanks for coming in. I saw you at the Elks Club last week, giving an informative presentation there, some of the stuff you covered today, most of it was a little bit different, but great, great job as always. So thanks for coming in and sharing your information with us. I've got a couple of concerns. I talked to another judge who I won't name today, that had actually sentenced someone to prison and was working after hours at the courthouse, finds somebody following her into the elevator, so she and the person that she'd sent to prison were in the elevator, unescorted, alone. I asked the other ladies on the dais here if they'd like to be in that situation. So I think it's a situation that needs to be addressed. I don't know, when was the last time that the court had a security review?
2017.
2017. Was there anything that was noted there that hasn't been addressed? And I don't need to know the details, I don't need to make those public, but was there anything that was addressed that should be addressed? Or is there anything that was lacking that should be addressed? And is it time to have another security review of the courts?
So, most of it has not been addressed. And that situation also was, I think it's a lesson to all of us, if we're looking at our phone, watching who gets on the elevator. It is, obviously, security is a very large issue in our courthouse. We all saw the video of Las Vegas. I can tell you, higher benches, bigger well, is important for security. Almost everything from that report has not been addressed. I am hoping and that collaboratively, I did mention this in my above-base letter for next year, to work with a joint request from the sheriff's office to have deputies at the doors again and open both doors so there's movements. I think from a practical point of view, as you all know, you've toured the courthouse, I go up the same elevator that all the people that are coming from the jail and they're, but they're in belly chains, handcuffs, and ankle chains. Those aren't necessarily the people that I have any fear or I'm going to treat them all with respect. It is the angry family members, it is the fellow gang members that are sitting in our courtrooms that are not in custody. And that security has to be improved. Our sheriff's office is very dedicated to us, they're obligated to provide a bailiff, they are also obligated to provide security. Sometimes, I think it appears that the bailiff is going to do all the security for the courtroom and that doesn't work. And so you're exactly right. This is a ripe time for review, particularly, and one thing I forgot to say that I did want to acknowledge all of you, that I thank you very much for putting a courthouse on your top three of capital improvements. It will help every area that each of you expressed, that you have concerns with. And in that, we obviously will have better security. But in the meantime, we have to address it and we most, I can provide each of you that report, and then we would be very grateful if we could have another updated report.
Thank you, Judge Jones. So just to recap what you said, since 2017, we've known about security issues and the majority of those have not been addressed.
They've not been addressed completely. The sheriff's office, and I want to make sure, I'm really glad you said that back to me, the sheriff's office has done whatever they can, but it is a building that is fraught with issues and I don't want to say any other things.
Sure, sure. And I'm not picking on the sheriff and I'm so-
No, 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 but I'm just, I don't want to talk about where I know there's some weaknesses.
We don't have to go into the details. But what I'm concerned with is safety of the public, safety of the employees, safety of the other inmates there. I mean, if it's a known issue and then we haven't addressed it or made a better effort to address it, what kind of liability does a county have if, you know, you know how these lawsuits are, if you have anybody, if somebody points out the fact that somebody got hurt, the county knew about it, they didn't, had years to fix it and didn't, and, you know, there's just a long ways that this could go out and we'd still have to fix it. So it makes sense to fix this problem before it turns into a bigger problem, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I agree with you and I agree that there is, I don't know if you've all felt it, but there's this question, what's in the water? There are so many people that are more angry right now, there's an increase in homicides in our community, there's an increase in crime, there's a bravado sometimes about addressing institutions that we've always held sacred. We are very vulnerable to, and the thing I always think about is, you know, I'm on the third floor. If there was an issue at the entrance, it is our staff, it is the security there, and that's, that would be the most harmed, the public going through that area, they would be devastated. Even though our deputies do drills with regard to potential active shooter, we need deputies at those entrances. We need our community protected, because the reality is, are they going to get up to my chambers? I'm not sure. But what I do know, and we have a new sergeant who is actively training with each department, but I agree with you, it's, there is this place that I worry about constantly, about our employees on that first floor. I will be trying a case on a five-week double defendant murder trial in the CLC, which again, thank you very much, you provided that during COVID. And there's a lot of extra security that has to happen. And it will happen, I know it will. But we are, as a whole, I think our community, every building of the county and the courthouse is very vulnerable.
Thanks again. I think, you know, 2017 was then and this is now, and now we have an opportunity, we've got an all-new, except for I think Commissioner Herman. So I think this board needs to take a good, hard look at that and maybe have another analysis to see if things are even regressed even further than they were in 2017.
Well, and I'm sure it's also a time ripe for all of you as well in your chambers and your, this place. We have to be, we have to be astute about it. And so with your permission, Chair Hill, I'll follow up on that report and commencing some dialogue about a new report and what that would entail.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think how fortunate we are to have a person, amazing person like you as our chief judge. Thank you very much.
You're kind. Thank you very much. I think I have reciprocal respect for all of you and for what you do. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your time. Any other board members have comments? I'm not seeing any and we'll be chatting, looking forward to it.
Please, I'm available anytime to talk about any issue, even if it has to be like right now I'm on a break in my trial, but I want to be available, I want conversations with you and so we can collaboratively really address the needs of our community.
Absolutely. We're committed as well, so thank you. Have a great rest of your day. Okay, we will now move on to our block, which I think we just have one item in block. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a recommendation for block? 10? Okay. Great. So do you, is that in the form of a motion, Vice Chair Herman? Okay. So a motion for block for item 10, is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item 10?
There is none.
Thank you so much. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that passes unanimously as well. Oh, yes, go on your screens, please. Great, thank you. That passes unanimously. We'll now move to item eight, Mr. Manager.
Item eight is a direction to staff regarding the submission of comments and letters on behalf of Washoe County in opposition to the United States Postal Service conversion of the existing USPS Reno Processing and Distribution Center to a local processing
to a local processing center, which would require a local area mail to be processed in Sacramento, not Reno, as outlined in USPS's initial filings document. Marked mail processing facility review dated February 6, 2024. And we have Kayden Smatievich.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Commissioner Clark asked for this item. And so I know that Ms. Smatievich has some ideas on the letter, but she wanted to get direction from this board. And so I hand it over to you first, Commissioner Clark, on your thoughts on what you want to make sure is included.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm concerned that, I think the quality of postal service would diminish by moving this sorting center across state lines, across a major mountain pass in the United States, the Sierra Nevada Mountains. It's a great distance. There's weather, there's traffic, there's wrecks. There's a lot of reasons why I think it would diminish the quality of service. Just my thoughts. And more importantly, the human cost of loss of jobs for fellow Nevadans that are working there, union jobs that are working at that facility. And I just look at so many different unintended consequences. People getting their medicines delivered and just lots of different things. So bills, late fees, just different things that cause people hardship. I think as this community has grown over the years and continues to grow, the last thing we need to do is have less of postal service. So that's just my personal thoughts on it.
Thank you for that. And Ms. Smatievich, do you have anything to add on that item?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Kayden Smatievich. I have the privilege of serving as government affairs liaison for Washoe County. Through you, Madam Chair, to Commissioner Clark. Thank you for that detailed feedback. The things that you have identified are things that we had included in the draft letter that we have prepared. At this time, with this board's direction, it would be our intention to send letters to our congressional delegation in Washington, D.C., who directly represent Washoe County. I do, I think, want to share with you, if I may, just some information regarding the postal service for your awareness and the public's while we're discussing this. The United States Postal Service is a federal agency, but it is unusual as a federal agency in that it operates as an independent enterprise and does not receive appropriations through Congress. Congress does direct funding, the amount of funding that's appropriated from the Postal Service Fund to the Office of the Inspector General of the Postal Service. And so involvement from our congressional delegation will look a little different than it might on other issues where we engage with them on things. But that's not to say that they won't be excellent advocates for us as we express our information to them. But because of that unique nature of the postal service, it is also important that we submit written comments directly to the postal service, that we and concerned members of our community do that. There is a portal that's available. Those comments are due to the postal service, I think, as you pointed out last time, Commissioner Clark, by the end of the day tomorrow. And so it would be our intent to both express our concerns to our members of Congress, but also directly to the postal service. We've gathered some information from the California Transportation, Caltrans, about the number of hours of closures and restrictions on Interstate 80 over Donner Pass that we think perhaps was missed in the initial evaluation that the postal service conducted. And so we want to be sure that someone looking at a map and saying it's 100 miles maybe doesn't recognize on that flat map the topography and the challenges that that presents. And so we intend to share that with them. And our view is that this is not just about the volume of the mail, but about the nature of the mail. The Reno Processing and Distribution Center not only processes mail from Washoe County, but it processes mail from Carson City, our state's capital. And the nature of that mail is critical to our residents here in Washoe County and throughout northern Nevada. And so with your permission, we would like, as we engage in dialogue with the postal service and also our congressional representatives, to be sure that we're communicating that information.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the past week, I've talked to other folks now that it's come to our attention. I don't think the, I think the county was caught off guard. I think the residents were caught off guard of Washoe County and all of northern Nevada. You're right, so many unintended consequences. All of northern Nevada is probably served by this. But I understand that seven or eight years ago, this was proposed before and folks talked about it and got a groundswell against it. And now it seemed like to me, it just kind of almost flew under the radar here with very little notice. I think it'd be nice if we'd had a little bit more time and get, certainly, the other municipalities involve Sparks and Reno and Carson City and all the other counties that are served up in the north here by that distribution center. So it's a short notice. And hopefully, we can make a difference and make this stay here for the locals' good of northern Nevada. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you, Commissioner Clark, for those comments. We have, over the course of the last 10 days, you know, really since the public meeting that the post office held, you'll note, included in your packet was their findings document. It's dated the 6th of February, and they held a meeting on the 13th of February. So the community had a little less than a week to review and understand the implications of those findings. In the time since, we have had a number, Washoe County has been involved in a number of conversations with our Secretary of State. I met with the Governor's Chief of Staff about this issue last week. We've engaged the Nevada Association of Counties, who has sent information out to the other communities. I've been in conversations with my counterparts at the city of Reno and Sparks. And they too are working on advocacy on this issue as well. I've spoken to representatives from EDON and the Chamber of Commerce. So our community is coming together to be certain that the folks at the post office who need to hear the full information and get the insight that can come only from people in the community will be receiving that by their deadline tomorrow.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola.
I really want to thank Commissioner Clark for bringing it up because I wasn't aware of it as well. And immediately upon learning, reached out to Congressman Amade, who responded immediately. I really appreciate you bringing up the unique relationship of having a government agency and how that process is funded and how that relationship that may appear that folks can do a certain thing, which is normally what would be done, is very unique with the post office. So I think that that was very, very helpful. I also want to thank you for immediately, you know, going into, you know, reaching out to the governor's office, to NACO, to other jurisdictions, because it really needs to have a loud voice in terms of having everyone be on the same page. It's unfortunate that as we are growing, that we're even having to have this discussion based on the logistics and all the information that's already been shared. So I really appreciate the letter going out. And again, your concerted efforts. And I'm going to do everything I can to echo it as quickly as possible since tomorrow is essentially, as you pointed out, the deadline for the cutoff for communication officially. But that doesn't mean we can't communicate, you know, effectively. So even having, I hope, a message from the governor's office would be certainly helpful. And again, I'll do everything I can. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you for pointing out the timeline. So it wasn't just my imagination. It happened quite quickly, you know. Very rarely do we see government move that quickly, even though that federal department. But it just seemed to come out of nowhere and with not a lot of time to react. So thanks for putting that on the record.
Okay. Any other commissioners have comments? Not seeing any. So Madam Clerk, I think we have public comment.
We do. Penny Brock is signed in.
Okay.
Penny Brock, as you know, I attended that meeting. So I was there. I heard. I spoke at it. My biggest concern is loss of chain of custody for our mail-in ballots. Another, more people handling the mail-in ballots from Nevada. We will virtually have no chain of custody. Sacramento will process those ballots. When I first thought of it that way, process those ballots, that is a concern. I am surprised that our ROV manager, Ms. Burgess, is not here. She was quoted in the Reno Gazette Journal just a few days ago. Why isn't she here speaking about this? I am also concerned that you don't have Amber McReynolds here, who is the outside consultant overseeing our ROV. She is the vice chairman of the U S Post Office. Why isn't she here talking with you about this? Why didn't she alert us to this? She could be attending by Zoom or whatever. And as far as the letter, it can go directly, I would think, to Amber McReynolds. So she should be, in my opinion, she should be included in the loop of who you all have the letter sent to. That should not be a problem. It could be emailed like by the end of today and certainly by the end of business tomorrow. The other concern is that the United States Post Office is a union. We heard about that at the meeting. The union workers were there. Now, if you know anything about unions, they all vote on what presidential candidate they're going to be supporting. This is a concern. Locally, we would have our union workers, the post office workers, handling our ballots. Now, we're going to have the Sacramento postal workers handling our ballots. This is a concern. In my opinion, and the opinion of many voters I've spoken with, no union should handle our ballots. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay.
Oh, wait. We do have Gary Schmidt signed in.
Come on down.
Come on down.
For the record, Gary Schmidt, please include my comments in the record in detail per the open meeting law. You know, I hate to admit that I once lived in California. Actually, I lived in California in its glory days. I moved here to Nevada in 1972. But I still own a little bit of property in California. And I have a little bit of other tangential experience here because my wife happens to own a post office. But let me say that I'm totally opposed to this center being moved into California. Among other things, we don't know how long California is going to remain a state. I'm one of those that is in favor of giving it back to Mexico. But I've had problems with mail service. And I have businesses in four states. And I see this would be a problem for Nevada and the community. And I'm in support of any efforts to try and oppose the movement of the center into California. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now there's nobody signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, with that, I am, unless other commissioners have comments, looking for a motion on this item. Commissioner Clark, do you want to make the motion? Okay. Who, anyone else? Commissioner Andriola.
I'll move to proceed with a letter and the continual contact throughout the community to oppose moving the closing of the facility and moving it to another location.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Looking for a second? Sorry, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. With a motion and a second, any question by the board on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. We are now moving to item nine, Mr. Manager.
Item nine is a recommendation to provide direction to staff regarding a deteriorating six-foot-tall, 1,150-foot-long precast concrete panel wall. Okay. Located along the interface of the Arrow Creek Parkway, right away in rear property line of 14 residential lots at 13430 Field Creek Lane and ending at 13560 Field Creek Lane. Estimates are provided, but final costs are dependent upon competitive bidding. Current options include, A, remove, replace, and paint the deteriorated concrete wall panels with all costs borne by Washoe County, which is approximately $373,600. B, remove, replace, and paint the deteriorated concrete wall panels with one-half of the costs borne by Washoe County, approximately $186,000, with a cost share of approximately $186,000 between the 14 property owners. Or C, completely remove the existing concrete panel wall with all costs borne by Washoe County, approximately $75,000. D, any other direction provided by Washoe County Commission. All options will require a funding source to be identified. If options A or B are directed in an agreement transferring ownership and future maintenance of the repaired wall to each individual property owner will be developed and presented at a future meeting.
Thank you. I look to staff. Do we have a staff overview on this? Look at all those documents.
Good morning, for the record, Duane Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. This item is presented to you today, and it involves the concrete panel wall that's along a portion of Arrow Creek Parkway. And maybe I can ask, there we go. So maybe this will help just a little bit. I think somebody walked off with the.
I have it right here.
No. As you've read in the staff report, there's a lot of details associated with this particular item. I'm going to attempt to summarize it briefly for you as you consider this request that staff has brought for you today. So the picture you see on the monitors overhead is where this concrete panel wall fence is located on the north side of Arrow Creek Parkway. Just for a little bit more reference, the Trekkymetis Fire Protection Station is just to the left. Further to the left or to the west is the Arrow Creek Residential Development. To the right is the Wolf Run Golf Course. The wall was built by the Arrow Creek Development and their owners about 25 years ago. The development agreement for that Washoe County project captured and included a requirement that the developer assist with the mitigation of impacts by the construction of the new Arrow Creek Parkway. Prior to the Arrow Creek Development, there was no roadway behind these homes. So this area of Washoe County did not have Arrow Creek Parkway. So when the planning efforts were being put into place, there was a concern about impacts. The wall was ultimately built as part of the roadway project. And that wall was located almost immediately on the property line between the 14 residential property owners and the now Washoe County right-of-way. So it's right there. It serves and functions as the back wall or the fence that in. It serves and functions as the back wall or the fence that encompasses those lots. Some of the other things that were done during the development of the roadway were to lower the roadway. So the roadbed was lowered and moved to the south to help mitigate any impacts of the future roadway. The wall was built when that roadway was built. And within a short amount of time, five, 10 years, portions of the wall began to deteriorate. And it has since continued to deteriorate with failed panels. You can see in some of these pictures here. Portions of the wall are fine. And what we believe is the issue is that the concrete mix that was used in the production of these wall panels was faulty. So you can see in that upper-left picture, you can see some of the failure of the wall. You can see those panels are getting ready to fail. The center picture shows where a chain link fence was installed after panels had failed. The lower-left picture is where some of the panels have fallen out. And the picture to the right shows that there are still panels in very good condition. In fact, a concrete wall such as this should, with some type of periodic maintenance, have a service life of approximately 100 years. I pulled that off of one of the websites for the concrete wall panel manufacturers. But when the wall was built, after the contractor warranty expired, which was approximately one year for performance, and typically there's about a five-year warranty for materials, there is no warranty for this wall at this point. Residents contacted Washoe County. They did so in the 2012 timeframe and then again about two years ago to bring this issue to our attention. They've asked that the wall be repaired. To help understand what that would look like, Washoe County Engineering did several things. We investigated the wall, performed site visits. But more importantly, we started working closely with the residents, talking with them, understanding what the concerns were, and trying to develop a strategy about how to move forward and bring this, of course, to you, the board, for your direction to staff. The options that I presented in the staff report are not your only options. I just provided these to you as basically bookends. So on one end, basically Washoe County would remove the existing wall in total and walk away from it. The other bookend would be Washoe County would repair those failed portions of wall and bear that cost completely. And of course, in the middle would be some type of cost share. To help us understand some of the more specific details associated with the wall, we did perform a sound study last year. We hired Jacobs Engineering. They went out and performed a sound study to understand if the wall was being built today, if the Arrow Creek Development, who ultimately paid for all this, was going in today. Would that be an engineering condition? Would that be something that our development code would require that developer to incorporate into that project or otherwise? The sound study came back, and it was certainly identified that there is noise levels. But the noise would not trigger an engineering requirement for the construction of the wall. But I want to go back to that point up toward the top there in 1994, that when the Arrow Creek developer came in and expressed their desire to construct and build and plan and ultimately develop the Arrow Creek Development, that the residents that lived directly back up to this new roadway were listened to. And the Board of County Commissioners at that time directed the representative for Southwest Point, the developer of Arrow Creek, to incorporate those mitigation efforts, those things that I just talked about, lowering the roadway to help reduce sound, moving it to the south away from the properties and building ultimately this wall. Those were decisions that were made by that developer, and they were incorporated into their plan. Those plans were reviewed and approved by Washoe County, and that was fully funded by the developer of Arrow Creek. So today, we're bringing this to you. And I appreciate the fact that there's a lot of details in the staff report. And I'm not sharing with you every single detail. There's a lot of nuances in those things. So I'm here to answer questions for you. And I know Mr. Letty provided some comment earlier in the meeting. But I do recognize that something that's been going on for 25 years for construction, 35 years for planning, there's going to be a lot of back and forth, a lot of issues that came up at this, you know, through time. But my request to you today, and really representing the residents, is to seek your direction, to come to an agreement to understand how we should move forward. Whatever that recommendation that the board presents and requires staff to do, two points I want to make. Again, these are just options that are provided to you. You may have other things that you would like to look at. The second thing that I would say is that whatever your direction is, I'd really like to come away through this process with a transfer of the ownership of that wall and the maintenance responsibilities in the future to those property owners that benefit from that wall directly behind their home. I think that's very reasonable. This does reflect a unique situation. In all my time at Washoe County, I haven't run across quite this situation before. So I appreciate your consideration, and I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have Commissioner Clark signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is in District Two. And the county owns the land, and the county owns the wall. Is that correct? I mean, that land was somehow or another deeded to the county from the developer, the land that the wall sits on. Is that correct?
Through the chair to the commissioner, that's correct. The property was offered up for dedication in 1989 for this portion of the Arrow Creek Wall, or excuse me, the Arrow Creek roadway. The design plans for the project, the off-site improvements by the Arrow Creek developer, included that wall in those plans.
So the improvement's the wall. We own the land, and the improvement is sitting on our land. So we own the wall. Is that a correct statement?
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners before we open it up to public comment? Commissioner Andriola?
I have a question in terms of, it looks like for 10 years, at least from the initial inquiry in 2012 by the residents and then from 2022 to present, looking at a solution. Is that a right timeframe? I know that there's always complications, but it seems like the 10 years have passed. And did I get that correct?
Through the chair to the commissioner, maybe I can add just a little bit more detail in my very brief presentation. I didn't go into that level. Around the 2012 timeframe, and this is based on emails through our research and conversations internally, that the residents did come to the county at that time to request that the wall be repaired. Because it was, again, it was started in a fail within five to 10 years of its initial construction, and there were concerns about the wall. At that point in time, in 2012, that timeframe, certainly we were in a much different financial position. We were just coming out of a very difficult financial time. There was no funding identified, and there was no CIP projects that were identified to address anything with the wall at that time.
Okay.
Pretty much at that point, there was responses back to the community to that effect, to the residents. And there was really no action taken by either Washoe County or the residents until about two years ago, when Mr. Letty came to the board and made public comment during open comment. And at that point, working with Candy Ramos, we started initiating, again, the dialogue and spending a little bit more time to go through and look at the history, understand how this might have come to this place where a wall was constructed on ultimately property that Washoe County owns and now is responsible for this wall. As I said a few minutes ago, this is not a very common situation. As a matter of fact, I made a copy of the one wall where we have responsibility for, which is just up over here and just off Sutro, where we have an actual agreement in place. That agreement specifies the responsibilities. I've also reached down to our other partner agencies. And in all those cases, we find that there are agreements of some sort that define, again, responsibilities, ownership, maintenance, repair, replacement, those types of things. I think that because this was not an actual engineering or planning condition, that it was brought forward and placed into the development agreement as a request of the developer to work with the residents to identify potential mitigation issues, I think it was kind of treated as such. And ultimately, it wasn't, an agreement wasn't captured 25 years ago to deal with just the situation that I'm now presenting to you today for your decisions.
We have a follow-up. You had mentioned at the end of your presentation that whatever the particular option is given by the body that you're looking at ultimately transferring the property to the residents for, you know, their maintenance. And so would the property actually then go transferred, deeded, in terms of that strip of land, so to speak, that those residents, would they then own that property? If they have the responsibility, I guess. I'm sorry to interrupt. But if they, from my perspective, if they have the response, if it looks like that there may be action taken where the responsibility becomes to the resident for essentially that wall that would be in their backyard, that they would then own the property. And I'm just trying to understand the property transfer piece, not just only the wall responsibility. So that's my first question. My second follow-up question to that is, is there feedback to the residents or from the residents on that? In other words, taking back that responsibility? And if you could share that with us as well? And I know Mr. Letty is raising his hand, so I don't know procedurally how this all works.
We can wait for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair to the commissioner, thank you for that. The approach, should we move down that direction, would be to either quit claim or do a boundary line adjustment to capture that particular portion of the Washoe County right-of-way and transfer that to those 14 abutting property owners. There would also, I believe, need to be an easement put in place that would allow for those residents to gain access to the backside to do that future maintenance, repair, and replacement. Hope that answers your first question.
It did.
The second question you asked was, how have staff been effectively working with the 14 property owners? And I appreciate that question. What we did, and I may not have put it into the staff report, but we worked with the community and developed a draft agreement, a memorandum of understanding. And that memorandum of understanding committed that we would come and present this item to you, seek your direction, and then ultimately, just as I said, ultimately transfer that ownership of that wall, should the wall be repaired, to the property owners and make sure that they had the legal accesses in those pieces. I made sure that each one of those 14 property owners signed that MOU, that letter of understanding. To me, because this would not work if one or two of the property owners decided to do something different. So that was one of the agreements that we had in one of our several meetings, was that everybody would have to agree and commit to that approach. So we do have that concurrence, and I appreciate the residents for agreeing to let me bring that to them, their agreement to that, and allowing us to present this to you.
I promise that this is going to be my last question. You mentioned in your presentation that Southwest Point partners during the initial development of Arrow Creek Parkway and the subsequent wall that we're talking about, that it appears that there may have been, and I thought you used this word, so I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I believe you said that it seemed to be faulty because had it been put in with, I'm using my words now, the correct materials and executed, that it should, meaning the wall should last approximately 100 years. And I wonder if you could speak to that point in terms of, I know it's been a long time, but if in fact there is fault, where, and I realize that you mentioned that we have exceeded the boundaries of timeframe for the year and then the subsequent maintenance piece and all of that. But, you know, if something's found to be faulty and it's discovered, I'm wondering, number one, when was that discovered? And number two, is there any recourse if it is in fact was faulty materials or faulty execution or whatever, the faulty part of the building of that particular wall was in place?
Again, through the chair to the commissioner, I would say that ultimately, the construction doesn't appear to be the issue. It's the actual materials that were used in the construction of the wall. That material supplier, which is identified in the project plans, went out of business relatively quickly. They are no longer in business today. The, I'm not an expert in construction defects. I would, again, offer that there is likely no person or group or companies to go back to and say, we have an issue. Now, that timeframe may have existed at some point in the past, but it did take a while for the wall to deteriorate, to the point at which it started to fail. I'm not suggesting that all the wall is a problem, but those panels, those areas of the wall, which is about 60% of the wall, are what we're talking about. The other 40% of the wall is in good condition and should meet its performance life expectation.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if your group met with the other commissioners, but a lot of the stuff that we're covering today is things that we went over. So I kind of have a good understanding of that. If it was defective material, if it was defective workmanship, even if the company normally, if the company even goes out of business, they still had an insurance policy in place at the time. But in this case, nobody seems to know who that insurance carrier was. So going back in time to try and fix this is kind of a rabbit hole that we're not going to get out of. We also, we didn't really emphasize the fact of safety here. If this wall collapses on somebody, somebody's in their backyard, whatever. So to Commissioner Andriola's point, at the end of the day, we want to get rid of this hot potato. We want this land to go back to somebody other than Washoe County to maintain from now until the next time the wall falls down. But I had a question about, and you kind of answered it, about you got an agreement signed with all 14 property owners. In lieu of that, could it have gone, this property been dedicated to the homeowners association and let them take it? Is that ever an option, to let the homeowners association handle it and be the owner? Or are we going to have 14 separate owners owning whatever linear foot property?
Through the chair to the commissioner, that's an excellent question. And I would leave it up to Mr. Letty, the president of the HOA, for Field Creek to speak to it more clearly. But we did approach that. We did have discussions regarding that. And I was told very clearly that the HOA had no interest in owning or assuming any part of this wall.
So we're in the same club. We don't want to own any part of this wall either, and apparently we do. But, so the 14 folks have agreed to this. So if we split this in half and the county dedicates the land to the people and they agree to pay for half of the repairs or rebuilding of the wall, and we agree and we can find the funding to do that, it looks like each of the 14 owners are going to pay approximately $13,285.71 based on the quote that we have here now. With the cost of materials, the cost of labor, the longer we sit on this, it's going to be more costly, I presume, just by the nature of construction today. Have you talked to the 14 owners about splitting this with the county? Or is that just kind of our wishful thinking? Is that our idea to split it with somebody? I know I talked about, you know, finding some middle ground that we can work with these folks. But have you talked to them? Thank you.
Apologize.
Sorry, sorry.
Through the chair to the commissioner. In my meetings with the homeowners, we did not identify this cost share. And that only occurred recently after you and Mr. Letty and I met in your comments. And I brought that as, again, as multiple options presented to you, you know, so that you can make the best informed decision. And again, I tried to bookend it with basically either removing the wall or Washoe County bearing the full cost and then, you know, providing that kind of somewhere in the middle, a middle-ground approach. I think that the reason I included that in that, and I certainly have spoken to Mr. Letty and asked him to go back to the other homeowners and have that discussion. But there are. and asked him to go back to the other homeowners and have that discussion, but there are other infrastructure types that can be located within public right-aways, where there are cost shares or special assessment districts that are put together to address that thing, such as sidewalks. And so that was my fundamental kind of thinking, to look at that, it's somewhere in the middle based on those comments. So for clarity, no, I did not go back to each one of the 14 property owners with that. I discussed that with Mr. Letty.
Because that'd be a lot of money if somebody had to come up with $13,000 today without really agreeing to it before. So I just wanted to make, clear the air, make sure that that was just a concept out there. But, you know, the least expensive way for the county to fix this is demolish the wall and call it a day and dedicate the land back to the folks that are there, is what I see here. But, you know, there is a certain value to the homeowner to have a nice quality fence on their property that they own as far as, might even affect resale value. A nice fence versus that picture you showed us with kind of a homemade chain link fence strapped around something. So there is some benefit to the owners of owning that property and having a quality fence on the side of their property. So just thinking out loud here. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia, have you signed in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of good questions. I'm going to add to those questions. The, I understand it was built in 1999 by the developer, and that developer was listening to the concerns of the future residents who were there, who had already lived there. And their concerns were largely centered on noise, view shed changes, and safety. Given that we just gave, or conducted a recent noise assessment that was found to not trigger a need for a sound wall, that kind of deletes the noise factor for me. Can you talk to the other two points originally raised by the residents at the time? That's the view shed changes and safety concerns? And if so, are there any existing concerns that we need to know about today?
Let me add just a little bit to the Commissioner through the chair. The sound study was performed to understand if it would trigger an engineering condition if the project, the Arrow Creek project, were being done today. And it would not trigger that. But it doesn't mean that the meetings with the county commissioners and the concerns regarding safety and view shed weren't an issue. I think that the residents that lived there prior to the roadway and the wall being built, their lots opened up into the back, they had a different view shed than what they have today with the fence, and certainly with now having a roadway, you know, behind the homes creates a potential safety issue for whatever number of reasons might, you can imagine, might occur. And so I think that that's why most properties along roadways and McCarran and highways and these types of things have these rear fences, is to make sure that there is, the safety issues are addressed. So I think that that was recognized then in 1994, when the development agreement for Southwest Point for Arrow Creek was being put together, they recognized that there might be some issues, some situations that needed to be addressed, even though they may not have been planning or engineering conditions at that point in time. There was still a response to the residents that came out to the commission, and the developer agreed to those things, added those things to their plans, and funded and paid for those things. So those were not Washoe County dollars that paid for any of those things, and there was not Washoe County dollars that designed or developed those things. Because I hope that helps answer your question.
Yes, and I saw that they used special assessment district funding to pay for all that. I was just curious, because it's hard to see from the map provided, are there fences within the fence or fences that butt up to the wall on any of those 14? This is essentially their backyard fence line.
Personally, I did not stick my head over every single lot, but none that I saw had an adjoining fence. And I think that's reasonable because the, based on the plans, the wall is only set offset by 12 inches. So there wouldn't be enough room to build a second wall and then to perform maintenance and those types of duties.
Thank you. Those are the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. I don't see any other board members signed in, so we'll go to public comment. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Steve Letty, and I do have documents to distribute to the board Go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. Steve Letty, President, Field Creek HOA. Knowing facts, Washoe County owns the property and the wall. This wall has been an ongoing issue for the last 18 years with no action. The residents have been verbally threatened with the county starting to say, "Just tear it down and walk away." The wall was included in the agreement, DAS 193, with Arrow Creek Development, approved by the Washoe County Commissioners for noise, safety, and living disruption. Field Creek homeowners were not to bear financial responsibility or assessment, per the commission. Arrow Creek secured a tax assessment to pay for the wall. The contractor hired by Arrow Creek failed to maintain proper concrete mix. The wall is defective, it lacks cement. The wall began failing in 2006 and is still failing today. Washoe County Planning Commission Amendment, DA 193. Prior to the issuance of the 35th Building Permit, the following improvements shall be constructed to the satisfaction of the county engineer. The county engineer shall be responsible for determining compliance with this condition prior to the issuance of the 35th Building Permit, and the following roadway improvements shall be constructed. White Creek Lane shall be designed in a manner that minimizes impacts on the adjacent homes to the north of Field Creek, fencing, berms, and lowering the travel lanes. Clearly states here, the county engineers were responsible for the oversight of the wall and that the county approved and mandated the wall. But we also know through county engineering that there are no building permits, no inspections, no quality control, no concrete batch tickets, no wall design specs, no maintenance plan. With this, it is unclear why Washoe County did not hold Arrow Creek Development accountable for the wall failure as it should have in 2006, or why the county did not take responsibility for compliance to oversee the wall as approved, and why the county did not explore the insurance bond of the contractor who built the wall. Washoe County Engineering Department has put forth a solution to once and for all relieve the county responsibility. The solution was presented to every homeowner, signed as requested by the county. Washoe County has all 14 original signed letters of agreement. This is the only solution that was ever presented to the homeowners. Had appropriate action oversight been taken during the planning and construction as dictated in DAS 193, when the wall failure was first related to the county in 2006, there would have been zero cost to the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Palm, and I do have documents to distribute to the board for Mr. Palm.
I'm Scott Palm. My wife Liz and I live on Field Creek Lane. A portion of the Arrow Creek wall butts up against the back of our yard. We moved to Reno from Georgia and purchased our home in 2014. While we were looking at the home, we learned that the wall behind the home was owned by Washoe County. At that time, we could see that portions of the wall had collapsed elsewhere, but the condition of the wall behind our home was in good condition, and we would not have purchased our home if it weren't. Since we've owned our home, we have not observed any efforts by Washoe County to paint, seal, or otherwise maintain the wall. Roughly three years ago, I noticed that portions of the wall behind our yard were beginning to crack and spall, and entire sections of the wall were beginning to bow. While no section has collapsed yet, the deterioration is now extreme. And it now appears that two-thirds or more of the wall behind our home could fail at any time. When this happens, it will drastically increase the level of noise in our backyard and will eliminate the privacy we now enjoy in our yard and in our home. When I noticed the deterioration of the wall, I contacted Steve Letty of our Homeowners Association and learned a great deal about the history of the wall. Steve arranged meetings for the owners of the 14 homes that are directly affected by this wall with Duane Smith, the County Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. These discussions led Duane to propose for our consideration, but subject to approval of Board of Commissioners, that Washoe County would repair the wall at the county's expense, and the small section of land it is located on would be deeded, that and the wall would be deeded to the homeowners. Even though this proposal would alleviate the county a future responsibility, the 14 homeowners agreed to this approach, and that's, those are the agreements that have been signed. Now, in this report that was just submitted, Duane's report, two totally new options, B and C, have appeared. Neither of these options have been discussed with the homeowners, and the homeowners have not agreed to either of these options. I feel that options B and C are both inconsistent with the original intent of the construction of the wall, to mitigate all the issues concerned with Arrow Creek Parkway. But the homeowners have agreed to Option A. As a result, I urge the Board of Commissioners to approve Option A. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Julie Barbieri. I'm also a homeowner, lived there on Field Creek Lane, and had moved in in 2001. Longtime Reno, my family is, and, you know, to see the deterioration of our wall has been, has just, it's been difficult for me because I take pride in my home. I want, I want it to look as beautiful as it can. I do what I can to maintain it, and had it been my wall, I would have been taking care of it. This started for me, I'm the one with the chain link, and it was not my doing, just so that you know. This started with Washoe County when my wall section deteriorated. I was the first one, and I called, and I was told it was Arrow Creek's responsibility. Arrow Creek told me it was not their responsibility, it was the county's responsibility. I finally got ahold of someone, and they sent somebody out who placed that chain link partition up against the wall. My thought at that time was that they were going to fix that when the weather got better because it happened during the winter. Spring and summer of that year, nothing happened, and I contacted them again. I spoke with Mr. Corbridge at that time, and he had informed me that they would not be repairing this wall and that it would be taken down before it was repaired. Because if he repaired my section of the wall, they would have to repair the whole wall. I had suggested at the time, what if you just were replacing section by section as they fail? I mean, you don't know that it's all going to fail. That was shot down right away. So I've been through this for several years. This started with our property, 2007, 2008, that winter, when it first collapsed. And I don't know if there's record about who came out and put the fence in or the chain link, but I just want to say that, you know, in dealing with this for so long, it is a safety issue. That was my number one concern, and what I was told was that it was my responsibility then to have a wall behind that wall, which I didn't really understand. But at the, I guess what I'm here to say is that I agree with the first proposal, Proposal A, and having it be our responsibility after it is done properly. Because the materials used were so shoddy, you could just touch it and it will crumble. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Pam Dar. Hello again, Chair and fellow Council, Commissioners, sorry. I live in a land management association, and I feel for their concerns. I mean, I can relate to some of them. I mean, certain things are happening to me that I was led to believe it belonged to one person, but it's ending up being ours, and now we have to pay for the maintenance and replacement and all this stuff. But when I bought the house, it was explained one way. So I can understand the frustrations of that. I also had a wood fence that I had to replace because, you know, wood, you should not use for fencing in Nevada. But I did that. It's not cheap. But also, the land behind me belongs to, I'm believing it's the City of Sparks. I pull the weeds, I make sure it's maintained. It shouldn't be my responsibility, it's not my land, but it affects my land. So I took that upon myself. There may be in question some of my fixed assets in my community of really who's responsible. So I might have to do some digging, which I don't want to do. I mean, I really don't, but I should. But the bottom line is, why should we as taxpayers improve someone's property given a brand-new wall? That to me, that's a lot of money, and there should have been some responsibility of maintenance on both parties. I don't want to upset anybody, but if they're going to get such a gift, I mean, there's a lot involved, like giving them a land, giving them a new wall, and then what about their, that's gifting them each home a nice capital improvement. And also, I mean, there's a lot of details there, and I would imagine that might be why it's coming back. If you have the option, and I hate to upset anybody, is to just tear it down and let them build their own walls. I'm a homeowner. I have to spend a lot of money on stuff. I don't like to spend money on things, whether right or wrong, or you can see where somebody else is liable. It's part of being a homeowner, but giving them, all 14 homes, a brand-new wall on the expense of the homeowners, I don't know whether that's really kind of fair to the taxpayers. Is there insurance? Is there something the association can do? Because I have to split costs on all the retaining walls and the fire road, and they even took my nice gate and put it to the top because they liked the gate on the top instead of the bottom. I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's just my opinion on that. I've been there, done that. It's not fun when you have this stuff not communicated well when you buy your house, and I feel for them. But why should it be the taxpayers' expense to fix it? Or we should minimize it, or try to make it as reasonable for each party? Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
If that made sense at all. Have it be good.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. For the record, Mark Newman, I bought a house in the north end of Sun Valley from the Lifestyles Homeowners Association. And when I bought my house, Highland Ranch Road ended at midnight. From there on in, it was just all a dirt trail down to Pyramid Highway. About four years after I bought my house, they decided they'd finish the road off and put Highland Ranch all the way down to Pyramid Highway. The road behind me, Highland Ranch Road, is actually higher than my fence line. I have a six-foot-high wooden fence. I hear cars, boom, 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 all day, all night long. Unfortunately, am I going to ask you, the taxpayers, to put up a new cement, concrete, sound barrier? Because when I bought the house, it wasn't there, and now it is? So now it's your fault? I'm sorry for their fact that they own the property, and it would be fair, my insurance, when my fence blows down, my insurance pays for part of it, my deductible pays for part of it, and then I have to take care of it or have somebody else take care of it for me. I know the property is ours. I think the people would be very lucky if we paid for the fence to be tore down, give them the property, and it would be up to them and their insurance company to take care of whatever kind of fence the Homeowners Association agrees to put up along that wall. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now open it back up to the board for discussion. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask a question to Ms. Canderas. I heard what Mr. Newman just said, and I've heard what other folks have said about owning their own fences, but in this particular case, the county owns the land and the county owns the improvement. So we're not just giving money away. Is that, am I correct in that statement or that thought? Am I on the right trail?
Commissioner Clark, yes, you are correct. If the county owns the property, then the county would either be responsible for maintaining the wall or tearing it down. I was looking in the, I was trying to look into the agreement, the development agreement to determine some of the assertions that we have to actually maintain it versus tear it down, that there's some future obligation to always maintain, and I'm not able to find it right now, but- it right now, but it, it's, this is a fairly long development agreement, so I can't, I can't give you an opinion on that. And I will just say this as an aside, there's supposedly, what, four, three options here, A, B, and C, and it does sound that the homeowners were only presented with option one, and so we can't force the homeowners to accept property, to accept the fence unnecessarily option B. I'm just letting you know, that's how I read that, too.
So, a couple of follow-ups. So, the county owns the improvement, which is the fence, the county owns the land, somehow or another, we have to maintain it, tear it down. When I, when I suggested splitting the, the costs, I didn't, and I specifically asked today if that had ever been presented to, to the owners, and it hasn't, so we're kind of getting narrow in the field down here to what we can do. Am I correct with that? I mean, we own it, it's falling down, we have a responsibility. If what Mr. Letty said is correct about the county was supposed to monitor it and, and make sure it was maintained, and somehow or another, this fell through the cracks, and now we've got a ticking time bomb that should have been addressed years ago, and now we get the fun of fixing it on our watch, so that's just where I see this thing going. Any, any thoughts?
I don't want to opine as to obligation for, like, for maintenance for all time. Again, I can't find it in the development agreement, but I am working off of the assumption that Mr. Smith is saying, we own the proper, we own the wall, we own the property, to the extent that that is some kind of a danger, then I would say there's probably a legal obligation to act, but I can't, that's not a finding that I can make, given the facts right here, that I, that I see in the staff report, and without more time to review the development agreement.
I'm just going to say this out loud. I don't know if it makes sense to, to not vote on this today, get these 14 homeowners involved with our legal department, and figure out what we can and can't do, and, and what's palatable to them and palatable to us, and before we pick one of these options. That being said, this has got to be resolved. This has been going on for years, and I think in the short, short time, we need to get this resolved sometime in the next 30, 60, 90 days, figure out exactly what we're going to do. But if they haven't been presented with the, the alternative, the suggestion of splitting the costs, if they have no, if they have no chance to even think about that, they haven't heard about it until today, it's, it's a tough decision. I think that this should have been resolved way before it came this long, and talking to Mr. Letty, he's been battling with the county for a number of years over this, hands up, eight, seven, eight years, seven or eight years, this has been just languishing. We, we need to get this behind us, and I don't know, I don't know if we should be voting on it today until we get a little bit more community and action on this, and our interaction to find out, but let these folks know that we're going to get this resolved in this, in a fairly rapid period of time. That's just my thinking out loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you. From what I understand, what I've heard today, it seems like this is only half the problem, because we're only dealing with part of the fence, the part that's, isn't that, is that true? I mean, it would, you were saying-
Duane, I think she's asking about ownership.
-we're repairing a portion of the fence, but not all of it.
Again, for the record, Duane Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects, to the Commissioner through the Chair. Our inspections have revealed that about 40% of the wall panels that exist today are in good condition, and that they would not need to be repaired. About 60% of the existing wall panels have either failed or are in the process of failing and, and would be repaired to create a, a long, durable wall.
So, we still have that to deal with, almost half is, is not dealt with, because when this lady down here moved in, her fence looked good to her, and she moved in, and then her fence fell apart, too. So the rest of it's bound to go. It's aged, and, and, and so we are only going to be dealing here today with half of the problem. So, yes, I believe that we should probably put this on the, in the hands of our attorneys and, and let them figure out what's legally possible to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, honed in on the development agreement and had concerns that that hadn't been flushed out a little more thoroughly, and I, I'd feel more comfortable if we had a little bit more time and information before we made a decision. And also, you know, given the comment that Canderas just made about us really not having option B as even a viable option, because we can't force somebody to take wall ownership, that was another concern of mine. So I'd, I'd be more comfortable if we could push pause.
Great. Commissioner Clark?
So, with what Ms. Herman asked, the question that Commissioner Herman asked, this 300 and, whatever the number is, 300, $373, 300, excuse me, $373,000, is that demolishing everything that's there, or just the bad panels?
No, through the Chair to the Commissioner, that's only replacing that 60% of the failed wall panels. That's also replacing the entire cap along the wall, and then that's painting, sealing both sides of the wall.
So, if we could, in, in the future, we can work this out, we can fix 60% of the wall and give away 100% of the ownership, is that, would that be, would the folks that haven't had their wall completely replaced have, have the ability to come back after, would they have recourse to come back after the county, or is this going to be a done deal when, when we, when and if we ever get to wherever we're going with this?
To the, to the Commissioner through the Chair, I think that's ultimately your decision. My recommendation is, and again, maybe I can back up for just a second. I have the development agreement in front of me, and I appreciate Ms. Canderas hasn't had a chance to go through it. I will tell you that, and you can see the yellow markings, I've read this development agreement front to back, there is no portion of the development agreement that identifies a maintenance agreement and a requirement for that maintenance agreement within the development agreement. But what it does identify, and I'll read it to you, is item 19. "The county engineer shall be responsible for determining," and I believe Mr. Letty shared this with you already, but I want to, I want to, just for your benefit, reading from the development agreement. "The county engineer shall be responsible for determining compliance with this condition. Prior to the issuance of the 35th building permit, the following roadway improvements shall be constructed." It, the first A talks about the Whites Creek Lane and the Thomas Creek interchange, the second one talks about the two lanes of Whites Creek. The third, C, and that's the one I want to read to you, and, and again, this was known as, potentially known as Whites Creek's, Whites Creek Lane, it is Arrow Creek Parkway. C, Whites Creek Lane will be designed in a manner that minimizes any impacts on the adjacent homes to the north in Field Creek Ranch. Examples include fencing, berms, and lowering of the travel lanes. So the developer had a board meeting in 1998, had, had heard from the residents and as well as the Board of County Commissioners, and it said that, and I'm reading from the meeting minutes of March 4, 1994, item 94-86, the development agreement case, DA 9193, that the representative and the board then discussed at length possibly mitigation measures that can be taken to alleviate the impacts to those residents living on Field Creek Lane, such as placing the lanes as far south as possible, lowering the road, fencing and installing sound walls. They stated that they will work with those homeowners, even meeting with them individually if necessary, to come up with acceptable solutions to minimize the impacts to them. Those, that, those comments were captured in the development agreement, and again, just for your benefit, Ms. Canderas, that is the extent of the identification of the obligation for that effort within the development agreement. The design plans for this portion on the landscaping sheets included the wall and included the detail for the wall. One, one detail, one note, and a line drawn on the plans to show the location of that wall. So I think this is something that, that ultimately was, was done to conform with the requirements of the development agreement and was, was pushed through. Couple of other comments. Yes, when I've, and, and other staff have been meeting with, with the residents over the last couple of years, when we're talking about these options, we're, we're looking at these details, we're making sure that we're all on the same page. Back in 2012, and I have the emails here, these other options of tearing down the wall or doing nothing were also mentioned in emails to the residents, and there appears to have been a community meeting or a cab meeting where some of these things were discussed as well. I appreciate the fact that the residents have been waiting for a long time, and that's why we brought this item to you today. No, I did not take every possible option back to the residents, as in fact, the approach that I was taking initially was only to bring you one option, and for you to debate that option and make a decision and direct me or staff how to apply that option. But I appreciated when I met with Commissioner Clark and Mr. Letty, because it became very clear to me at that point, and this was after we had had the letter of, of understanding that each one of the 14 property owners had signed and had identified that one option, that complete repair of that 60% of the wall. It became very clear when I met with Commissioner Clark and Mr. Letty that that would be unfair to you to only bring one option. And so in my haste to bring this to you to help to, to find resolution, whatever that resolution is that you will direct staff for, was to create those other two options. But as I said at the beginning, also, there may be other options in there as well that you may have questions, or you may direct staff to, to do something different. So I just wanted to add a little bit of perspective from, from staff's position, recognizing that we have been working with the community, and I certainly, you know, apologize if, if there's not enough information here. I think there, there's a, as I said also at the beginning, there's a lot of history with this and a lot of information, and there's a lot more details, and I can share those with you if you have those questions as well. But, you know, we do, we are seeking some direction from, from you today. I provided those options for your consideration, and certainly, staff is always open to whatever that direction that you want to give us.
And Mr. Smith, just for clarification, then I'll go to the Commissioner signed in. The one option you were going to bring the board was option A?
Correct.
Okay. Because you saw that as the way that we could transfer the property and move on from this problem.
You said it better than I did.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Andrell?
We're definitely going to have you as the institutional expert, along with Mr. Letty, on this project, that can be cemented in all of the things that I feel, or has been at least revealed from the information shared, where there is culpability. This is a little different, in my opinion, of just moving into your home and then having the responsibility of a homeowner. It clearly, to me, is concern, for instance, faulty, faulty materials that resulted in where we're at now, for instance, would have been caught or been identified at the time that the, you know, wall was, you know, given the clearance to pass, and not having permits, for instance, is a concern. You know, the Washoe County having the responsibility for determining compliance overall seems to be at least in question with some of the documentation that's in place. I believe that it would be really helpful to have even the legality of this, which has already been shared by others, outlined, and that we can bring this back. I think to Ms. Canderas' point of the homeowners only being aware that the Chair just clarified with you of option A is really, I think, a window that we can't go even open, and I think that tabling this is important. So what I think would be helpful, if it does come back and it does go in that direction, is that all those options are explored, and also that we have a legal, although the staff report was clear, and thank you for that, but just in terms of, some of the information was shared from the, Mr. Letty and the others and the residents, but also legally, what does the development agreement state? And I, and I appreciate you reading the information, but I think it would be helpful so that it would allow us to see a path of, that could be cleared in a resolution. But I, I really am concerned, to be honest with you, I know that you said 60% essentially is not okay, is that correct? 60% of the wall would be tore down or repaired as a possibility in your report for 373,600, but are, how are we assured that the other 40% doesn't have a faulty material? I mean, I certainly appreciate your expertise as an engineer and the testing that can happen, but then what happens? Because if it then, again, has some new fault discovered, I think we need some assurance, and if you already have that, that would be great, but I didn't see any of that in the report, that there wasn't any fault that was discovered on the materials itself for the 40%. So, it is a potential exposure that I believe would put the county in a position that hopefully we wouldn't have to go down, and I think that needs to be clarified, certified, and assured that those additional 40% of materials won't be a factor. So I do think this is a little different. I just want to clarify, I think the fact, again, that this isn't just, these 14 residents didn't purchase their home, and then the fence came down, and they were responsible, you know, it was, it's much more complex than that, and I really appreciate the thoroughness when it does come back from legality, from the options and the residents, also having a voice in the additional conditions. And I do really appreciate that option A was what your intent was, and that was the discussion, for instance, with the homeowners and what they signed, but I, I love that you are a creative engineer. Sometimes those two words can't be used, so I do appreciate the creativity, but I think in this instance, I'd feel more comfortable having the residents have a voice in that. Thank you.
And Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Smith. No apology is necessary. I think you've done a great job. I think that you're moving this, moving, moving this to us and bringing it to our attention is, is, is a big milestone for, for this community. And so, it was me that said, can we split the difference with them? It wasn't you? I, I suggested it. I didn't realize they, they hadn't heard that, so, so I apologize to them for, for not getting that to them. But I was just trying to come up with some ways that make this more palatable. You see that the rest of the community, the other half million folks that live here are going, why are we building somebody else's a fence? Well, and that's why I asked Ms. Canderas to, to bring the fine point out, that it's our fence, the county owns the fence. The other 500,000 people in the county own that fence along with the Commissioners. It isn't the other way around. So, we've got a problem, we own a fence that's faulty, we need to figure out the most efficient way to, to fix that, remedy that problem, and that's, that's how, that's my take on it. The county owns it, it's faulty, how do we fix it, and what's the cost-effective way to do that, and in the meanwhile, satisfy the folks that have to look at this on a regular basis? So, that's where I'm coming from. How does a county fix a fence that we own that's faulty in the most economical way? Does that kind of distill it down to what we need to talk about, and then, and then how do we foist this off onto somebody else when we get it fixed? So we don't have to ever worry about it again. Thank you.
So, I'm hearing from the board that folks want to table this item unless there's a motion that someone wants to make at this point, but it sounds like there, people are looking for more direction from the DA's office and to coordinate a bit more with the residents, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for your work on this. Any Commissioners disagree or want to put another point? Any commissioners disagree or want to put another point to the matter on the record? Commissioner Garcia?
Just a quick question. On Option C, I agree 100%, but just out of curiosity, on Option C, would there be a transfer of wall ownership if we were to just tear it down?
Through the commission, through the chair to the commission, no, the wall would be effectively removed. The property owners would then make decisions about what they would do with, with the back of their properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I apologize. I don't mean to be out of order, but I just, you know, wanted to go back. I appreciate the comments. I've heard. I've taken notes. So if I'm hearing correctly, there's a, as I wrote at the, at the end of the staff report, if Options A or B are directed, an agreement transferring ownership for future maintenance to the repaired wall to each individual property owner will be developed and presented at a future meeting. I think I'd always intended to bring something back to you, but I just wanted a little bit of clarity on, on if there is anything specifically that you would like me to bring back to you.
Commissioner Clark?
I'd just like to comment on Commissioner Garcia's question. If we just tear the fence down, we still are going to own the land. And if we just tear the fence down and we own the land, then they wouldn't be able to build their own fence on county land. Is that correct? They'd have to come inside the, the boundary line of their property. If they wanted to build a fence, if we didn't dedicate it to somebody, otherwise, the county's going to continue to own the land whether the improvement is there or not.
Through the commissioner, through the chair to the commissioner, I think that's what I was, was trying to allude to, was that, that the portion, the wall located on the Washoe County property in that option would be removed. And then, of course, the property owners have any decision that they would make associated with their property. They would not necessarily, I wouldn't see a reason why they would want to build, rebuild a wall on Washoe County property. They'd probably want to build it within that 12 inches on their property, if that helps provide clarity.
That does. I just want to make sure that if we go that way, people understand that we're going to own a, what is it, a 12-inch wide strip of land down that road that the county owns? So, you know, if somebody didn't, if somebody wasn't aware of that in writing, they might see, well, this is where the fence used to be. I'm just going to build my new fence right on this line, and that would be on county property. So we'd need to be very clear with folks if we, whatever way we go with this, is, if it's a county property, they can't build a fence on it. And, and, so part of getting this resolved is to also get the county divested from this, this piece of property, this strip of land. So just, just that's what I, I want to make sure that that's completely transparent and clear to all the property owners. Thank you.
Well, I think you're asking a great question. You need to walk away with clarity. My understanding from this board is that we need to understand a bit more of the legal consequences, and it sounds like there's some questions that the board has about. So there's some work that needs to be done with the DA's office on that, on each one of these options. And so I don't think the board quite understands what that looks like, and so I think that that's something that I'm hearing from the board, they'd like to hear. And then having a discussion with the residents about cost sharing and what that would look like, it sounds like that discussion hasn't been had yet. I'm sure that the residents, seeing that Option A is even on the table, I'm sure they're going to say, no, we're, we're not interested in cost sharing. But hey, you know, it's worth a discussion, and certainly, you've been talking to these 14 residents. If you could work on that and then bring back where we're at. And Commissioner Clark, it sounds like this is his district and his initiative, so he wants it brought back hopefully here soon so we can have a resolution and get this, this wall transferred over and built and figured out and, and resolve this issue with the residents. Any other commissioners want to add to that?
For, thank you, Madam Chair, for a point of clarity. I'm just really interested on what the county is obligated in terms of maintenance according to the Development Agreement. That's what I'm curious about. Thank you.
Yes, and specifically, this quote that Field Creek bears no responsibility, I think that that needs to be fleshed out a bit. And understanding that the HOA may not have responsibility, but do individual residents have responsibility? That would be important to have a better understanding of. Any other board members? Okay. Well, then, we will be in touch. Thank you, everyone, for your time today. We are now moving to Item 11. Mr. Manager. Actually, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
This will be Bill Number 1905, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code by modifying various sections in Division III, Regulation of Uses in Division IV Development Standards in order to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units, detached accessory structures, manufactured housing, and battery-charged fences. These updates include deleting a section of specifying the procedure and findings for placing a manufactured home that is less than 1,200 square feet in size and modifying various sections to allow detached accessory dwellings, dwelling units as an allowed use by right in certain residential regulatory zones. Require detached accessory dwelling units on parcels a half acre in size or smaller to be subject to the administrative review permit process in Article 809. Update the maximum square footage for both attached and detached accessory dwelling units. Define minor accessory dwelling units. Modify permitting requirements for detached accessory structures. Update the minimum square footage manufactured homes and add provisions relating to battery-charged fences as required by Nevada Senate Bill 208 in 2023, and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I look to the board. Do we need a staff presentation on this item? Vice Chair Herman, would you like that? Yes, okay.
Cat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. I'm excited to take you through the first set of affordable housing amendments to come before you. So this is the first of four priority affordable housing amendments that you all kind of reviewed at a high level and directed us to pursue in November of last year. That was in conjunction with our strategic plan priority to address the housing affordability issue, and also, of course, with the adoption of Envision Washoe 2040, the new master plan, which also specifies affordable housing as a priority topic. These amendments contain four different broad topics. First of all, changes to standards and permitting requirements for accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Secondly, updating standards and permitting requirements for accessory structures. Third, making a change to standards for manufactured housing. And fourth, updating, creating standards for battery-charged fences. The second two, or rather, the last two, were initiated by changes to state law. Some background. From 2010 to 2022, there has been a 145% increase in median home value and only a 58% increase in median household income. And that's just one statistic to illustrate the issue that we all know exists, which is that housing accessibility and affordability are huge issues in our region. ADUs play into this because their lower development cost can make them more affordable, and it also diversifies housing types, which is one of the main cross-cutting themes of Envision Washoe 2040. They can support seniors aging in place, can diversify incomes in neighborhoods, provide an economic opportunity to homeowners to get more value out of their property, and can support multi-generational living. To talk about the kind of nitty-gritty of the amendments, first to clarify, the changes are not applicable in the Tahoe planning area, only applicable in the valley. In summary, the amendments would change the permitting process for detached ADUs where they are allowed in some cases. It would match the maximum size for attached and detached ADUs to create more consistency in our code. It would change the maximum ADU size in medium-density suburban from 800 to 1,200 square feet and would create a minor ADU designation. All of this is with the purpose to lower barriers for property owners to put an ADU on their property and to make the process easier, cheaper, and faster for everyone. Here's a look at what those changes look like in the text. This is our use table, and what this shows is that where detached ADUs are currently allowed through an administrative review, they would be allowed by right, and where it's currently allowed by a special use permit, it would be allowed by administrative review with the caveat that on any parcel half an acre or smaller, an administrative review would be required. What this pie chart on the right shows is that we did an analysis of discretionary ADU permits we received over a four-year period, and what we found was that an extreme minority of those applications got public comment of any kind. And so that tells us that public process is not serving a real purpose. It's a chance to create an efficiency for us and for citizens in Washoe County. We're also going to define a minor ADU, which would be an ADU less than 500 square feet. The purpose of this is to provide just a bit more flexibility and also an opportunity to incentivize smaller units, which are generally more affordable. You can see, again, in an analysis of historical permits that we've received, the vast majority are on parcels bigger than an acre. And so that tells us that there are potentially some site constraints in getting an ADU on a smaller parcel. There are also other factors at play, such as septic regulations, but this is just an opportunity where we can say, hey, you can put in a smaller unit that's less intrusive and have a bit more flexibility on where you can put it, on the lot, on the type of parking required, if that's appropriate, to provide more options for homeowners, and also an option for us to incentivize something that could have a positive affordability impact. The second topic is detached accessory structures. These are your sheds, garages, workshops, those sorts of things. We also took a look at these historical permits when we were looking at ADUs, and again, we found we got a lot of permits for them. They're all approved. There's a chance to be more efficient here. Right now, if an accessory structure is bigger in square footage or footprint than the main home, an administrative permit is required. That's a permit with a full public hearing process. Because it's based on dwelling size, the result is not consistent in terms of which size structure on which size parcel would need this higher level of review. Two neighbors could have two different sized houses, want the exact same workshop, and go through different processes to get it. And so, again, an opportunity to create something that makes a little bit more sense and also is consistent in only requiring a discretionary review where that is appropriate to assessing potential impacts to neighboring property owners. We're also proposing some other improvements, providing more specific review considerations for when a discretionary permit is required. And again, all this to create more consistency in our regulations, to make the permitting process more logical and efficient for everybody. Here is a brief summary of what those changes are. You can see there are four different categories of lot size, smaller than half an acre, half an acre to one acre, one to five acres, and then bigger than five acres, and each of those would have a corresponding maximum square footage allowed by right. And then there would be different types of reviews you would go through based on how much bigger than those allowed by right square footages you wanted to go. So it would still be possible, but recognizing that there might be more of an impact, there would be an appropriate review process to capture that. The text below that shows the specific, just examples of the types of compatibility, compatibility characteristics that could be considered if a discretionary review is For manufactured housing, in 2023, a state law was passed that changed the minimum square footage for a manufactured house from 1,200 to 400 square feet. We're updating our regulation to reflect that change that was made to state law, deleting a manufactured housing section that is not relevant anymore because of this change. And while, again, this is precipitated by changes at the state level, there is the benefit of increasing accessibility to those smaller units, which are more affordable. Lastly, in the same legislative session, a bill was passed requiring us to adopt an ordinance with specific rules regarding battery-charged fencing. What is proposed is exactly what is required of us by state law. A lot of the language is verbatim from the state law, and this will bring us in alignment with that directive. A brief summary of public outreach. Two public workshops were held on December 7th and 14th. About 25 people attended each workshop, so that's about 15 total. Questions were about the potential impacts of ADUs, relevance to the Tahoe Basin, and septic regulations for ADUs. We received some written comments, and in many cases, had subsequent conversations with those folks to address some of their concerns and provide clarity. And I also just want to mention, we have received a number of permitting requests or inquiries across the counter in the interim since these amendments were initiated that would benefit from these changes. So we can see in that way the impact they would have. We don't expect that there's going to be a huge immediate change on the ground, but this is just a little thing we can do to make the process easier for us and for citizens in Washoe County. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Great work. So excited to see this. Looking to the board on any questions before we open it up to public comment. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just wondering if, what was the reason that this wasn't going to be included in Incline Village and that part of the county specifically? Thank you.
Yes, Cat Oakley. So there are currently a completely different section of our code that regulates accessory dwelling units in Incline Village and in the Tahoe Basin. In, at a regional level, there's a very different regulatory structure, and there are different sets of concerns up there. And so it's something that we think merits its own dedicated process, and in that process will occur with many other important topics that are going to be explored and addressed for that area. So we thought it would be more appropriate to do it as part of that future specific process.
Follow-up question. Thank you. What about the other communities around Lake Tahoe, even down into South Lake and the other side of Lake Tahoe? Do you know if this, this is allowed in those jurisdictions?
I can speak to that. Please. So staff has promised me that they're going to bring these same amendments through the Tahoe Area Plan, hopefully at the end of this year, after they're done with the Washoe County Master Plan. Because of all of the environmental concerns and the work that needs to be done still on the Tahoe Area Plan, they've said, let's just wait on this because right now, it's if you're, and if you're under an acre in size, you cannot have an ADU on your property. And so, but around the lake, except for the Nevada side, except for Douglas County and Washoe County, ADUs are allowed as, as a right around the lake. And so Nevada's still working on our amendments, and we're, we're hopefully going to be online. We'll see, well, we'll see what the outcome is. There's going to be some work in the community and discussions, but there will be full changes to the Tahoe Area Plan at the end of the year.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions? Vice Chair Herman, were you signed in?
I answered it myself.
Okay, great. Well, I don't see anyone else have questions at this point, so Madam Clerk, public comment.
First up, we have Pat Davison, and I have a document that she submitted to be distributed.
Good afternoon, Chair Hill, members of the commission. My name is Pat Davison. I live at 35 Clydesdale, at the far northern end of Red Rock Road. My focus is on increasing the supply of needed housing either through homeownership programs or long-term rental options. It seems like the housing shortage is headline news in our area just about every week. This past Sunday's Reno Gazette-Journal had a feature titled "Housing is Becoming a Luxury Good." So now's not the time to ignore options to remedy our housing shortage. I commented on the ADU changes at the January 2nd Planning Commission meeting, and hope you had a chance to read my support letter. While the review process for detached ADUs on smaller parcels in the GR and GRA zones, those parcels half acre or smaller was increased, the review process for other parcels was made easier. Please see the text description of the proposed changes on Page 2 of my comments, and if I've made an error, I request that staff correct me. Page 3 of your staff report for this agenda item contains a population forecast for unincorporated Washoe County. In the 20 years between 2022 and 2042, quote, "Unincorporated Washoe County will need to absorb up to a 16,824-person population increase," end quote. That's 841.2 people per year. Even if we only look at half that amount, where in the unincorporated portion of the county will those 420 new residents live? If you approve these changes, county staff should reach out to various organizations like the Sierra Nevada Realtors, the Reno Chapter of the American Institute of Architects, the Builders Association Northern- the Builders Association Northern Nevada, and other construction associations to vigorously publicize this new opportunity. Members of those groups are likely to be in touch with homeowners who are thinking about building an ADU to house a family member or to generate long-term rental income. I also strongly encourage active monitoring in the next couple of years. Did these code changes result in more ADUs being built? If not, then some adjustment might be warranted. Please support these development code changes as proposed by staff and recommended by your planning commission. ADUs for long-term rental are only one tool in your toolbox of housing solutions. We will need many more actions to increase the supply of needed housing in the years ahead. I want to thank Kat. She's been very patient answering all my questions and helping me get ready for today. Thanks for considering my point of view. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Gary Schmidt?
For the record, Gary Schmidt, please include my comments in detail in the record. I haven't had a chance to study this entire item, but generally, I'm supportive of it. You know, it ties right into a subject I bring before you all the time, which is GRLAC and the perceived and actual housing shortage up there, a buildable lot shortage. And you know, there's two things I'd like to discuss briefly. One is the cost of housing, and the other is social trends. And in the cost of housing, having been in the rental business for half a century in four states, it's not primarily the lot, the property. It's generally the construction. And the trend here is to eliminate unnecessary bureaucracy to bring construction down. And also, when you allow smaller units, that brings construction down for a housing unit. And specifically, like in GRLAC, most everything is now third acre zoning, and I think it should stay third acre zoning, and there's a proposal to make it nine lots to the acre. That won't solve the problem because the real cost is in construction. But what you have here does go a long ways to solving the problem, because all those third acre lots now can build another house, you know, an accessory dwelling on it. But this is going to make it easier, and they'll be able to build a smaller accessory dwelling on it. So I am in strong support of the concept here. And it goes to the rest of the community also, especially in the rural areas. Now, that has to do with cause. Now, social trends. You know, some of us are, at least aspire to have large houses in generations past and may have had large houses and had rooms like libraries and rec rooms, kitchens, of course, and offices. But the new generations really only require two things: a bedroom and a bathroom. And there's their rec room, computer games. There's their library. There's their office. And there's their kitchen, Uber Eats. So the social trend is for smaller housing also. So they go hand in hand. That will...
Thank you.
Mark Newman?
For the record, Mark Newman. I'm not really opposed to the smaller houses on the smaller property. My concern is, I've seen it throughout the areas where the people are bringing in their travel trailer and they actually pull it into somebody's backyard and lives out of it and attaches their hose to their sewer system. And my thing is, if you're doing these smaller dwellings into different lots, are you going to be requiring as part of this that they have their own water metering and sewer system attached separately from the main dwelling of the house? Because as Mr. Schmidt said, the smaller houses are needed for a lot of people. And if you look at any of the old houses in Old Reno or Old Sparks, they're barely 1,000-foot houses. The people in those days, they went to the city park for their recreation. They didn't stay at home with their families. They would have six or seven kids sleeping in the same room. And it's still a lot of that, a lot of the rural areas all across the United States. The smaller houses isn't the problem. It's being able to put the smaller houses into the area and have it done correctly. Just like with the fence here, if they had followed the 5P program, we wouldn't be in the 7P program right now. And I know some of you have heard me say it. Proper planning proves proper performance. And unfortunately, Arrow Creek did the 7P program, which is piss-poor performance proves piss-bore planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looking to the rest of the board to see if folks have any other comments. Yes, Commissioner Garcia?
I was really excited to see this come forward again. And you made a statement earlier that you said, "A little thing we can do." And I actually think this is a really big thing that we are contemplating and discussing today. First, because it gives property owners the opportunity to bring in extra income. And given that our household incomes have not kept up with our median home value, I think that's a really critical piece and an area of, I can't think of the word, just relief, I think, for our property owners in Washoe County. Some of the public commentators already talked about the importance of increasing inventory, which we're desperately lacking right now. But more than anything, I'm interested in seeing more products hit the market that are sustainable, that have small footprints, that could lend themselves really, really well to our aging population, to our extended family members who need that social interaction but can't care or maintain these large properties. So I really like that. And I think, for me, the fact that we are diversifying incomes in neighborhoods, that's a point that really speaks to me because, in our case, I hope, I'll see how my colleagues feel, but I feel like this is viewing the diversification of incomes in a neighborhood as an asset instead of it being a deficit. So I really thank you for all your hard work on this.
Great. Very well put. Any other commissioner comments on this item? This is a first reading, so I'm just hoping that someone will want to read it into the record. Do we have anyone looking to do that? Okay, then, let's see. I'm happy to do it if no other commissioners want to do it. I move to introduce and conduct the first reading of, what's the ordinance number? Sorry, Madam Clerk.
1905.
1905, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code by modifying various sections in Division III Regulation Uses and Division IV Development Standards in order to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units, detached accessory structures, manufactured housing, and battery charged fences, further to schedule a public hearing for the second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance for March 19th, 2024. Okay, with that, we are now going into item 12. Mr. Manager?
Item 12 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comments limited to three minutes per person. Comments will be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Jim Dykstra.
Penny Brock. Alert: FBI and U.S. sheriffs warrant, get prepared. FBI Director Christopher Wray told reporters it's possible that Hamas or other terror groups could call on their supporters to carry out attacks on U.S. soil. Now, a big group of U.S. sheriffs were briefed by FBI Director Wray in Washington, D.C., about being under attack. An Ohio sheriff returned home and promptly did a press conference on February 7th. He reported, according to what Wray told the sheriffs, "There are more red flags going off now than before 9/11. We were told it's not a matter of if, but when, and they are going to attack our elections." Wray said, "I want the public to know, we are now on the defensive." A former FBI special agent said, "We have over 1,000 joint terrorism task force going, cases going on here in America today relating to Muslim extremists. Illegals are entering the U.S. through the southern border 50 times higher than two years I see a lot of Chinese coming through," it was reported. "Most of the people you see coming through are military-age males. I see Afghans coming, and by the thousands sometimes." So could they have a coordinated attack at some point where they walk into a theater or a grocery store and start spraying bullets like they did in Israel on October 7th? Chinese nationals have increased over 1,200% compared to May 2022. I would ask, did Sheriff Balaum attend this meeting with Director Wray? It would be nice to have a report from him on this matter. I also think it would be prudent if you would ask our Washoe County management team to be thinking about this and coming up with a plan in the event this should happen in our community. Everybody's hearing about this. We know that everybody is, their number one issue now is the crossings from the southern border. Why? Because of the safety issues. You heard about that young student nurse that was killed in Georgia in the last few days by the illegal. Young women are saying they're afraid to walk across their college campus alone or to jog anymore. Something's got to be done. Please do something about it.
Hi, Jim Dykstra. I thought it was interesting that Chief Judge Lynn Jones also highlighted the need for efficiency in the courts, that security's a concern and expensive. And maybe it's not a good idea to have 67-year-old ladies playing bridge in mahjong just outside the security perimeter of the court. Anyway, in early 2017, I joined a group that was seeking to establish a senior center in Incline Village. After close to a year, Marsha Burke Beigler became a big supporter of this project, and a grant was secured for a community center in the empty half of the old county library. In March 2018, a soft opening occurred with mahjong, cards, digital photography class, and light exercise. In June 2018, a formal ribbon cutting occurred, and the center continued on a very limited budget with volunteer hosts to keep it open during limited hours. In February 2020, everything closed. In August 2022, it was announced that the Incline Justice Court, which had lost its lease in another building, would move to this county-owned old library building. The Forest Service lease would end. The idea was that the onsite court personnel would enable the community center to have longer hours. The community center never reopened during the remodel. In late February to May 2023, the Incline Sheriff Substation flooded, and the sheriff's substation moved into this building on an emergency basis. On January 16, 2024, I stopped by the community center to see how the court remodel was going and was amazed to find the community center signage had been removed from the outside. There was now a sign on the door to the public boardroom that said, "The public's basically not allowed." We had lost our largest room to the court. In Room 1, which was still left to us, it was full of discarded furniture. In Room 2, that was left to the community center, it was full of construction debris from the remodel and discarded furniture. In the small office, it was again full of discarded furniture.
Followed by Mark Newman.
For the record, Gary Schmidt, continuing from my earlier public comments, I'd like my exhibit to be attached to the minutes and my comments to be included in the record in detail. Reminding you, I spoke earlier about the NRS 278310, which is an absolute right dictated or provided by state legislature to appeal matters involved in zoning regulations to the Board of Adjustment, which is being denied substantially in Washoe County. Now, Washoe County has created an administrative hearing office, and they try and push people into the administrative hearing office process when they appeal a zoning regulation issue. However, the county cannot override the rights that are established by state law. I gave your new community service director this sheet earlier on. Going to try and set up an appointment with him, but I'm trying to read some things on it into the record. Who picks the administrative hearing officers and by what authority? Is it not inherent conflict of interest for the community service department to pick the hearing officers that oversee the validity of the decisions and actions of the community services? It would be sort of like the assessor's office selecting the members of the Board of Equalization or the fox guarding the chicken coop. Why and by what authority does the administrative hearing office require a process of appellate respondents that they don't require of themselves? By what authority is Washoe County denying citizens or persons the rights to appeal to the Board of Adjustment proclaimed in state law? By what authority does anybody in community development or community services arbitrarily make a decision as to what may be appealed to the Board of Adjustment or what may be appealed or should be appealed to the administrative hearing office, or maybe can't be appealed to either? Why isn't enforcement by complaint only a violation of Section 1 of the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution in regards to equal treatment under the law? Why do Washoe County employees continue to work from home? COVID is over. It is difficult to get a live person in the Department of Community Services, and return calls are slow. I also include here two additional public records requests in addition to the some 15 that I've issued in the last couple of days. Thank you.
Good afternoon again. For the record, Mark Newman. My hopes is that you will actually get our county district attorneys to look into the taxes for properties and the new developments to help improve with our parks and recreation departments, not only for our youth, but so far, our seniors. Because our parks departments and our seniors are both hurting very bad within our community. And as I stated before, hopefully you guys will look into doing something for the meals for our seniors, because they really are sad. I have pictures of them. Mr. Clark has been out. I don't know how many of you others have been out to see the meals that are delivered. I do not know what the home delivery meals are, but I'm sure they're the same. I do not know what the home delivery meals are, but I'm sure they're the same situation. They're not very attractive. I got pictures, if you like. The next thing is, is please, if you guys do with this new, smaller housing, that the inspectors do their job properly, and that there's some good planning in behind what you're going to be doing, so that we don't have future problems down the road like we're having with the Arrow Creek fence. It should have been taken care of by the developer. The developer tried to get an easy way out instead of putting on a person's property, putting on county property, and now homeowners, big mess. And thank you very much. I know what it's like on that side of the table. I'm on numerous different boards for you guys and elected officials. Well, thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. There's no one else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we will now go into Item 13, Mr. Manager.
Item 13 is Commissioner and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything for us?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been nagging about this a long time, but I still believe that our Cabs deserve the right to hear developments in the Cabs. This is the way it was originally planned and for that purpose. So we are actually denying the voice of the people in that respect. So I'd really like to see that on our agenda, to where we can renegotiate that and get that back in where it belongs. The other thing is, please, could you get my election integrity bill on the agenda?
So I can address both of those? I can address both of those?
Thank you.
Okay. On the Cabs, my understanding is, Mr. Manager, we are going to see an update on that, correct? The staff are working through some cab recommendations for the board?
Yeah. For the record, County Manager Eric Brown. So since the first of the year, we have been, the commission's support team has been taking community input on the Cabs. I have actually, am in the process of circulating and making cab visits and doing the same. And once we have completed that, which will be hopefully within the next 30 days, we will come back to the commission with recommendations for how the Cabs can be improved.
Thank you very much.
Including the development issue.
Thank you. And on the resolution, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up an email I sent. So Commissioner Herman, there hasn't been a change since I emailed you on February 20 about the request for the election integrity resolution. So even though the DA's office has concluded that parts of the resolution may be legal or under the jurisdiction of the county commission, the proposed resolution would conflict with the county to carry out our required administrative operations and duties to conduct elections. So per our rules and the county commission rules that are found online, it's that nothing shall be construed to require the inclusion of an item on an agenda if the chair makes the determination after consultation with the legal counsel and the Washoe County manager that the item should not be placed on the agenda because it substantially conflicts with the law or the ability of the county to carry out its administrative operations and duties. So that's a determination that I made, and that decision still stands. So thank you. Looking to other board members? I'm not seeing any. So with that, thank you for a great meeting. We are adjourned.